Good evening, everyone. It's 6:00. And I'm going to call to order the Placerville Planning Commission regular meeting for Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. Would you all please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? Can we please have the roll call?
Vice Chair Carter?
Here.
Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Chair Keeney?
Here.
Commissioner Lepa?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Okay, we have a full house here in the Commission. Next item is Closed Session Reports, which we have none tonight. And then we move on to item number four, which is the adoption of the agenda. And at this point, I would like the Commissioners to consider changing the order of our items tonight, moving number nine, which is a presentation on the draft or the information on short-term rentals. I would like us to consider taking that up after item 12 and before item 13. So we can... My thinking on that is, those of you in the audience who would like to say for that, please do. But this way, we can move through the public hearings. And those who are here for the projects can then take their leave if they so choose. So that's... I would like to reorder the agenda.
I will move to adopt the agenda with the change that the Chair recommended.
Thank you very much. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Mr. Carter and a second by Ms. Lepa. Anything else on the adoption of the agenda? Okay.
If we're having discussion, I'm just curious if we have any idea, maybe staff could help us, how long they would expect that presentation to be? Because if someone is here for number nine, the discussions on the public hearings can get lengthy.
Oh, that's an interesting question. Could I just have a show of hands of people here in the public who are want to... are here to see the staff presentation on hosted short-term rentals, item 9.1? Oh.
I think that's substantial.
One, two, three, four. Okay. That's the most of the... And of the projects or public hearings, do we have project... the applicants or proponents for the projects in attendance? We have one. Ooh.
All three are here.
Yes, Ms. Christian?
All three are here, all three applicants.
Okay. All right. Oh, that's interesting. I had hoped to...
Sorry, Madam Chair, did not mean to throw a monkey wrench.
I had the same thought initially, but since it seems like there's a lot of people here for it, maybe we should just keep it as it is.
Yeah, from the show of hands, most of the people are here for that item. So, and so be it. Let's just move through the agenda.
Point of order.
So, Mr. Carter?
Point of order. Madam Chair, to the extent that we had a motion duly made on the floor, we either need to take a vote on it or the motion should be withdrawn.
That's what I was getting...
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, apologies.
Thank you. Always need to follow the process. So, Mr. Carter, would you consider withdrawing that?
I will withdraw my motion, and I will move to adopt the agenda as it is presented.
And I will second.
All right. So now we have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as posted. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Do you turn it here?
Aye.
Thank you so much. And anyone opposed? Okay. That passes unanimously. The next item is the Consent Calendar, which consists of approving our minutes from the meeting of April 16th. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to adopt.
Okay, from Mr. Friend, we have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second from Ms. Lepa. Thank you very much. All in favor of... Any changes, any discussion of the minutes? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Mr. Smith, could you turn on your microphone for the vote?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, thank you. That passes unanimously also. Now, we'll move on. We didn't have anything pulled from Consent Calendar. Move on to item seven, which is Items of Interest to the Public and Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the Commission on any matter, not on the agenda, but within the subject matter. That's within our jurisdiction. And is there anyone in the public that would like to address the Commission at this time? Please come up to the podium. Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on to item eight, Written Communications on Non-Agenda Items. So I think most of the communications, we did receive quite a bit. We did get... I don't know if this counts as a communication. We all received a copy of that. Is there anything from staff on written communications, non-agenda items?
We have no written communications for non-agendized items.
Okay. Thank you. So as published, we will move on to item nine, which is the Presentation in Educational Workshop Sessions. This is regarding hosted short-term rentals in single-family residential zones in the city of Placerville. I'll turn it over to staff for that presentation. And it has both of your names on it. Christian, are you going to take the lead in the presentation in this?
I am not. Director Rebus will.
Okay, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rebus.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Oh.
I'm not Director Rebus, but if I could make one comment before we start here.
Oh, certainly.
Before...
And is your microphone on? I'm having a hard time hearing you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's on. Can you... Is that better? I'll eat it. Okay. The item before you is called Hosted Short-Term Rental Regulations. There's been some questions about whether or not anything should be considered beyond just hosted. So the statement I want to make is our primary focus that we've had throughout this has been on hosted short-term rental. But there have been questions. And so I want to present to you that as you go through this, you're welcome to think about if you have recommendations for anything in addition to or other than hosted short-term rental, other short-term rental. Keep that in mind, and you're welcome to make that recommendation. I don't know for sure if it's other than just hosted. It may require another procedure that we'd have to go back for. But I just wanted to let you know that you... You probably already know that, but you have that option to consider beyond just what the hosted is. So with that, I'll turn it back to Mr. Rebus for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Keeney, members of the Planning Commission. So staff is requesting that the Commission provide comments on the outlined proposed regulations for what we're now calling hosted short-term rentals, or SDRs, within single-family residential zones. These proposed regulations were primarily derived from the regulations that the city currently imposes on the short-term rentals in our commercial zones. Since we are now dealing with single-family homes and residential neighborhoods, we did look to mitigate any negative impacts on adjoining properties and on neighborhoods. Staff looked at other jurisdictions, which included the city of South Lake Tahoe, El Dorado County's current regulations, Sonoma County, Big Bear Lake, and Benetia. Following this workshop, staff will prepare a draft short-term rental ordinance to return to the Commission for review and to make a final recommendation to the City Council. So I'd like to start with a little background. So the cities... The city of Placerville's sixth cycle of the housing element for the planning period from 2021 through 2029 was adopted by the City Council in December of 2022. To address the community conditions and identified housing needs, the city identified goals A through H and implementation programs to achieve these goals and facilitate the development of housing to meet the city's regional housing needs allocation, or what we just shortly call RENA. Goal F states, "To preserve the existing housing stock," we have policy F.5 that states, "The city will develop regulations and amend the zoning ordinance to prohibit transient short-term rentals in residential zones unless the unit is owner-occupied." The process of developing a hosted short-term rental ordinance would be considered consistent with the general plan since there would be no loss of a dwelling unit, meaning the conversion of a dwelling unit into a lodging unit. In July of 2022, the City Council adopted an ordinance to include regulations that allowed short-term rentals within the commercial zone, the highway commercial zone, and the central business zones with a permit. On January of this year, the City Council directed staff to bring back to the Planning Commission, and subsequently, the City Council proposed regulations for hosted short-term rentals within single-family residential zones. And I'll just, again, go back to what the City Manager Morris said. It doesn't prohibit the Planning Commission from directing or making any other recommendations that you would deem appropriate. A hosted short-term rental is defined as follows. Rental property where the property owner hosts a visitor or visitors in a homeowner's single-family residence for compensation for a period of 30 days or less consecutive calendar days while the homeowner lives on-site in a home throughout the visitor's stay. So with this, I'd like to... We can make our way to the slideshow presentation where we can go over some of the regulations that we're proposing. Looking at these regulations, we've compiled a list of regulations and standards for short-term rentals within the city, and we can go over those here. Number one, where allowed, hosted short-term rentals are permitted in all single-family residential zones. So basically, what we're saying there is it's going to be confined to single-family residential zones, not multifamily residential zones. We're not proposing to allow short-term rentals within an apartment complex. Number two, eligible dwellings. So a hosted short-term rental may occur in any single-family dwelling habitable room, subject to all other requirements of this section. A hosted short-term rental may occur only within a legal dwelling unit. Parts of the property that are not habitable rooms and/or not approved for residential habitation, such as a vehicle, a storage shed, trailer, garage, a tent, yurt, or similar structure or facility, may not be used as a short-term rental. And then we have two parts of that. A habitable room shall not contain a standard or an efficiency kitchen. And a habitable room may include master bedrooms with full bathroom facilities. So in other words, it doesn't prevent a homeowner from renting out the master bedroom in the The third regulation is regards to accessory dwelling units. An accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, may not be used as a short-term rental. A primary residence with an ADU on the lot may be used as a short-term rental. So in other words, what we saw, there are some cities that would prohibit the property being used as a short-term rental at all if there was an ADU on the property. So we're not proposing such a restriction as long as, you know, the owner lives in the primary residence, and then it's used as a hosted short-term rental. Junior accessory dwelling units. So a junior accessory dwelling unit may not be used as a short-term rental. A primary residence with a junior accessory dwelling unit on a lot may be used as a short-term rental, same as an ADU. The property owner is responsible for ensuring that the hosted property complies with all applicable codes regarding fire, building and safety, health and safety, zoning, lighting, and any other laws and regulations that would apply. The property owner shall maintain a transient occupancy tax certificate and remain current on all required reports and payments. The owner must ensure that the TOT certificate number is included in all contracts or rental agreements and in any advertisements, websites, or internet listings. Number seven has to do with maximum occupancy. The owner shall, by written agreement with any renter, limit overnight occupancy of a hosted short-term rental to the number specified in the permit. The number of overnight occupants shall not exceed two persons per permitted bedroom, and children five years of age or younger are not counted towards the occupancy limits. Events. So no events are permitted. So in other words, when you're... If you're hosting a short-term rental in a single-family residential neighborhood, there'll be no weddings, lawn parties, or similar activities that may disturb the neighborhood. Interior and exterior signage. So signage shall be clearly provided, maximum occupancy, noise restrictions, permit number, responsible party, or really, it's a responsible party's contact information, information on high-fire-risk area, and directions on how to sign up for the El Dorado County Rave program, contact information for Placerville PD non-emergency number, and complaints. Number 10, off-street parking shall be provided on hosted short-term rental property sufficient for all vehicles associated with the property and its occupants. The limit of vehicles associated with a hosted rental is to be determined by the number of paved or gravelled off-street parking spaces dedicated for the use by hosted rental guests, not to exceed two vehicles. Parking is limited to designated parking areas as shown... that would be shown on the approved site plan for the permit for the short-term rental. In regards to outdoor amplified sound, outdoor amplified sound shall be prohibited. Quiet hours shall be from 10:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. Use of outdoor spas and hot tubs is prohibited during the quiet hours. Number 12, the hosted rental permit number shall be included in all advertisements, and the entire home shall not be advertised as available for rent. Number 13, the homeowner or host shall maintain records every night for which the hosted rental is rented, including name and contact information of the guest signing each rental contract, and the number of occupants under each rental contract for a period of three years, and shall provide such records to the city within 15 business days upon receipt of written request. 14, the homeowner or host shall complete the check-in of guests in person and shall review these performance standards with the guests prior to and during their stay. Number 15, these performance standards shall be included in the hosted rental agreement, including online terms of rental, and shall be posted inside the hosted rental in a location readily visible to all guests. Proposed Regulation number 16 requires submittal of names of all advertising platforms to be used to advertise the hosted or non-hosted short-term rental. Subject to all applicable laws, hosting platforms shall, upon written request by the city, promptly disclose to the city each vacation rental listing located in the city, and host ID, listed ID, and names of the persons responsible for each such listing, the address of each listing, and the length of stay for each such listing, and the price paid for each stay. Number 17 is fines for violation. These vary widely with jurisdictions. So the California Government Code does allow for the following fines. So it does allow up to $1,500 for the first violation, $3,000 for the second violation, and then $5,000 for each additional violation of the same ordinance within one year of the first violation. And then we just listed a couple of other regulations you may consider. And again, the Planning Commissioner may come up, or the Plant Commission may come up with a host of other regulations to consider. Because again, we sort of started with the commercial, which are, let's just say, a little more compatible as a lodging unit in a commercial zone than, say, a single-family residential zone. These may include a cap or total number within city limits. Some cities have these. A distance between short-term rentals or spacing in between lots that have a short-term rental on them. There are some cities that have this, but those are other ones that you can consider as well. So these proposed regulations would not regulate short-term rentals within commercial zones, since those are regulated already by ordinance that had come before you at a previous time. And then just a note, the bed and breakfasts are currently regulated by a different section of the zoning ordinance for bed and breakfast establishments, and this does not affect bed and breakfast establishments. So that is basically concluding the staff's presentation, and I'll then open it up for the Commission to deliberate, take public comment, ask any questions you wish, and start the workshop. Thank you.
Thank you, Pierre. That was very clear and succinct, and appreciate all the work that staff has already done on this. You had to survey what's going on in different jurisdictions and kind of synthesize that and come up with something that I think you're already on the right track, something that's going to work for our city, and it certainly does address the intent of, you know, the direction from the City Council as well. I had one question about permitting. You know, as I learn more about these short-term rentals and what's happening in other jurisdictions, it's obvious that enforcement of, you know, whatever regulations we put in place, enforcement is essential. And is the... Has the city looked at that as far as the permit fees? Because it seems that the... To get started with this, the permit fees are going to have to fund enforcement, and we don't have that as far as that. We have code enforcement for other things, but not for this. And, you know, if it becomes popular, it would, you know, require a lot of oversight. So is that something that City Council has already considered? How much to charge for the permit?
We have not received any direction from the Council on that, but that's a very, very good question, Chair Keeney. The staff did look at it, and the way we're looking at maybe the enforcement funding itself would be through the fines. So that's why we leaned a little bit higher, at the higher end of the fines as permitted under the state law. So that's where we're looking, where we would have enforcement. Because if we get complaints, we find violations, we can find them, and it's a... It could add up significantly. So we're not proposing really to change the permit fee, at least at this time. We would treat it similar to the way we do for the commercial short-term rentals, where we treat it as a... It's a very... It's a rather simple permitting process. It's through a special temporary use permit, because that permit is reevaluated each year. So it's renewed each year, and then a fee is paid. And I believe that's a $200 fee that we currently charge, because it's currently in our fee schedule. So we're not looking at increasing that fee until maybe sometime in the future, when we're looking at a more comprehensive update to all of our permit fees.
Okay.
But again, to answer your question more directly, it's the fines.
The permit fees, I, you know, appreciate that the permit can't be... It can't fund the entire program, and you are looking, you know, to recover costs through, you know, violations of our codes and ordinances. But from what I've been reading about the conflicts, it's that you have to have... Have to be ready with the enforcement to make sure that the neighborhood is... Neighbors aren't disturbed. Do any other Commissioners have questions for staff at this time?
Well, Madam Chair, actually, I had a question of procedure. Typically, when we have a hearing such as this, we would ask questions of staff to get clarification. Then we would have the applicant come up, do their presentation, then we would open it up to the public hearing. To the extent that the city is actually the applicant in this case, and I think a lot of our dialogue is going to be with them, I'm just wondering if maybe we'd like to hear from the public?
Right. That would be... That would be where I was going to go next.
Yeah.
Open it up to the public comment.
Yeah, then we can do all of our stuff with the city applicant all at once.
We're in agreement on that.
Yeah.
And at this point, I just want to know if Commissioners have questions about what was presented to this point?
I have some.
Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
How do you define a homeowner? Can it, for example, include a limited liability company, limited partnership? And if... And how do you, secondly, go about ensuring that the homeowner is on-site versus, let's say, a couple or own two or three houses? They could... One could be on-site in one place and on-site in another. How do you go about regulating that?
That would be through the permitting process. So it would be the owner, and typically, we want a grant deed. We require that on any application, so that the person that's signing the permit application is the person that's the owner of the property.
The owner... The owner could be a group, like a limited liability company or partnership.
Yeah, sure.
Our current permitting, so for the commercial zones, we have in the form, you're allowed to have the property owner and a responsible party. Responsible party in this instance would be the property owner. But there is a section where you initial, you agree to this, you agree to be on-site, things like that, respond within a certain period of time. So that would be one of those things. And when the application is approved, we put in the conditions of approval that if violated, you know, you'll get a notice, but if continued, we can, you know, cancel the permit and approval, so.
I think you bring up a good point. This, when I said we have to be ready for enforcement, this is something that, you know, from right out of the gate, the city is going to have to check, you know, if there's a question, is there really someone there on-site? So that's one of my concerns, is that we... Staff is... We're sufficiently prepared. We have enough people to go out and check these things. So that was a good question.
Yeah. Chair Keeney, if I may, there is a good difference between, say, our short-term rentals in a commercial zone, which are not hosted.
Right.
And so we're not looking at, you know, who the actual owner is. It just doesn't apply. But in the case of a single-family residential zone, that hosted means that's the person living on the premises.
Right.
The owner and living on the premises.
Do you have a question, Mr. Carter? Okay, I... Amy? Go ahead.
And I think some of this will come up as we kind of start more discussions around it. But I watched the January, the reference January City Council meeting, and one of the points brought up there, from, I believe, a public member, was the idea of some... I own a house, and I install someone who lives there full-time as the manager of that home, where I then rent rooms out on Airbnb or whatever in the rest of the house. Is that touching on the question that you had of whether... Because that came up to me as a question. It also kind of falls into another question that I had, where I tried to read through as much of the documents that we got today from email last night and pick up as many pertinent things as I could in my short time that I could read them. But the county work that's going on and the enforcement piece that they discuss in those documents, would that come into play here, or are we... Is that totally separate? They're not going to do enforcement in the city of Placerville with that. Okay, so there's no, like, hand shaking there where we can kind of tie into that plan that they talked about? It's going to be purely city enforcement?
Yeah, the city is an autonomous jurisdiction. Where there's no connection to the county, other than where the county seat within El Dorado County. Their ordinance only applies to county properties that are outside of the city of South Lake Tahoe and outside of the city of Placerville. So our ordinance is tailored more to the city's needs. The county, of course, has hundreds of short-term rentals, all different varieties, their entire neighborhoods within South Lake Tahoe that are 50% or greater short-term rentals. So they have a very different animal than I think we do here in the city.
Absolutely.
So we're trying to tailor it, keep it as simple as we can, because we're not the destination world-class resort, say, South Lake Tahoe is, with the demands they have up there. So from our perspective, we're just trying to do our best to protect the residential neighborhoods, reduce any negative impacts on the residents that live there in these neighborhoods, and then do what we can to reduce loss of dwelling units to meet our housing element needs.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to kind of touch on the questions that were referenced in that email about us tying or really linking into that, that that's completely separate. Okay, thank you.
Good questions. I'd like to kind of circle back around both Amy and... Both Amy and Kirk have brought up the idea of the, you know, the LLC or having a manager onsite, and I noticed in your summary chart or of other jurisdictions, South Lake Tahoe, Sonoma, Big Bear Lake, and Benicia all are shown as allowing, or defining a hosted rental as having a tenant with a two-year or greater lease. What is the, how does the city feel about that, just with allowing a simple lease as opposed to installing a manager or this idea of the limited liability corporation? Is that something that the city council had considered, or is it something they'd rather avoid? They're looking to have the owner themselves there. So, if, how do you think that would play if we, or how that would fit with their intent if we have, if we would allow a leaseholder to then rent out a room?
So, the city council has not given that level of detail as far as direction, so it's basically, that's why we're going to hold this workshop. We're going to come back to you with, with a draft ordinance. That may even take several meetings to get to a point to where the commission is comfortable with a recommendation to the council. From staff's perspective, we're relying currently on our adopted housing element of the general plan, so we're looking at no loss of a dwelling in it. And so, you know, if there were other cities that looked at, if there's a tenant, so in other words, the homeowner is leasing the property out to a tenant, and then that tenant lives on the premises then, and then it's also a short-term, a hosted short-term rental, the question staff asks, is there a loss of a dwelling in? Is that in violation of our current housing element? I would probably say that it isn't on face value.
Yeah, I think that would be an accommodation, a reasonable accommodation. I think, Kirk, you had your microphone.
Here's a couple of concerns. I think that we all want to avoid the problems of Lake Tahoe. They have more than 600 people up there now, units like this. So, how, how do we know what kind of limits they're going to be under your plan? You can have virtually every single-family house could be used for short-term rental. What, what limits do you have? The second one is, up there, they have concerns about getting rid of people that cause problems. So, that enforcement system is important. If, if you have a noise problem, somebody's using that jacuzzi at 11 o'clock at night, who's going to take care of it? You're not going to have code enforcement out at night. Is it going to be a police report that's made? How, how do you start to compile these violations? How do you figure that out? Again, that's, that's one of the concerns they have in Lake Tahoe, is getting rid of people who are in violation of these rules.
So, you had a number of questions there. The first one had to do with as far as the limitations. So, at the end of the slideshow, we had, we just had other regulations. So, you could look at maybe a cap or a total number within the city limits, because you're right. Every single, under the, if we were to pass an ordinance that allows short-term rentals and single-family units, almost every house could do one. So, do you want to have a, some kind of a cap or number total for the city? I leave that up to the planning commission. Or do you want a distance between a short-term rental, say, between lots? So, if there's a particular street, there's one short-term rental, do you want to have there, you can't be any closer than two lots to that single-family? Those are all good questions, but we don't have a precise answer for that, but that is something that can be looked at. Some other jurisdictions do that. But then, as far as going back to enforcement, enforcement is extremely difficult. Some cities contract out for enforcement, because it's such a problem, or, you know, it's just difficult. That's why the fines are so high, because basically, what we would do is, it would be a limit to where we would say, maybe it's a street thrice, three strikes, you're out rule. So, you pay that last $5,000 fine, that's three strikes. Maybe the fourth one, you lose your permit, and you can no longer be a short-term rental. That'd be a good incentive then for people to try and comply. But I would think with, at least with a host now, unhosted is where you run into the problems. That's been the problems in South Lake Tahoe and many other cities that are, that have high demand for tourists. But in a hosted, I don't think the person living there, especially if they're the homeowner, they're not going to allow obnoxious behavior. There, it's going to be self-policing. I think that's what, another consideration that we, we were looking at.
Okay. I had a question about one of the.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I did have my microphone.
I did not know.
That's all right.
You had your own.
That's okay. Well, first, I, again, I'd like to reiterate that I think this dialogue, which is exceptional, what we have to do is, is to me, kind of beyond clarification and really getting into discussion.
Right, I would like to keep it to clarification.
And so, and I'd like to hear from the public. But having said that, I don't, so I don't want people to be thinking I'm now discarding what I brought up earlier, but it seems to me, I'm, I'm, well, here's a clarification. I'm unclear, Pierre, if the intent, the suggested or implied intent is that a host, its owner occupied. I, I didn't find anywhere in here owner occupied, because the only way you can resolve or prevent the issues that the other commissioners, particularly Commissioner Smith, brought up about Lake Tahoe, is if you have its owner occupied, they live there, right? If it's, if LLC owns it, that's an absentee owner for all intents and purposes, you can't enforce all these other conditions that you want. So, I think you have to define host, which means owner occupied, or at a minimum, they have an employee, an authorized representative. I think the LLC could be managed with an authorized representative to enforce these things. And so, that's what's a little bit unclear. I don't think we would, the way this is written, you would meet the intent, which I think is to prevent and curtail problems as they might pop up, so.
I guess I would only state that when you're, I would ask exactly what, what you mean, Commissioner Friend, with employee. If it's where the house is, is vacant, except when the employee comes to live on the premises, when the property is being hosted for a short-term rental, that wouldn't comply.
Right.
It should be where the person resides. And my recommendation to you is, if you see that as an issue, I would say then that would be a recommendation of the commission then for staff to make sure we cover that in greater detail when we come back to you with an ordinance. But I'll just read the definition. We have a definition which we can further refine, you know, per the planning commission direction. A hosted short-term rental is defined as follows. Rental property where the property owner hosts a visitor or visitors in the homeowner's single-family residence for compensation for a period of 30 days or, or less consecutive calendar days, while the homeowner lives onsite in the home throughout the visitor's stay. So, if that's vague, or there's some holes in there, you can certainly recommend changes, and we can change that definition that we would include in our ordinance.
So, if, just to clarify then, if an individual homeowner had multiple homes, right? They would only be able to rent out whenever they could be present at the time one of those multiple properties were rented? So, they could only rent out one place at a time, regardless of how many properties they might have? Is that right?
Yes. If you had a real strict, if it was very restrictive, so it has to be the homeowner owns the property, lives on the property, and then serves as the host, as opposed to, say, in that other scenario where, say, that homeowner owns three houses. Unless you expand the breadth of what you consider then hosted to be a tenant of one of those other two or three houses that that homeowner owns, property owner owns, would that then qualify?
I think this would be, we could specify this or resolve our concern by having the applicant state that this is their primary residence. So, you know, if, if the house is owned by an LLC, and this, this person is part of that corporation, yet this is their primary residence for, for whatever reason, but that would be their affidavit. They would just say, this is my primary residence, and then other things would be specified in the permit, which room, or how many rooms. And so, I think that's important for us to, to make sure that we're clear on what, yeah, the definition of a homeowner. I have one more question about the proposed standards, and that is 2A about, the language about a kitchen. And could you just give us a little background on why it is, the unit is to not contain a standard or efficiency kitchen?
There should be a kitchen in the house then, that the, if it's a hosted unit, that the guest is able to utilize, already in the house. We don't want to get into a situation where if there's a bathroom and there's a kitchen in there, well, then it's a dwelling unit. And you get real gray, and you get into enforcement issues and everything. So, it's clearly supposed to be a bedroom. Like I say, going to have a full bath. But a kitchen, you get into problems, could be building code issues, but mainly, it's an issue of, are then we creating a pseudo-dwelling unit? And we don't want, we're not looking at doing that. It's not to say you can have a, you know, a coffee maker, or a hot plate, or those kinds of things. Be in there for the convenience of the guests, but, yeah, we're not looking at permitting additional kitchens with short-term rentals.
Thank you for that. Okay, are there any other questions at this time on the material presented to this, at this point? All right. Now, I'd like to open it up to members of the public to step up and share your opinions with us on what's been presented about hosted short-term rentals. And I appreciate you coming down here, and if you would, please state your name for the record, and I would like you, if you could, try to keep your comments to around three minutes.
I will do that. Thank you. Appreciate the time. My name's Frank Porter. I represent Housing Eldorado, which is a nonprofit on the West Slope, and we've worked with the city on several homeless interventions, the winter shelter and so on, and we run a safe parking program, we run an emergency rental assistance program, we run a navigation program, and we run a shower program with churches. We also work in the area of affordable housing, encouraging affordable housing, because as this council, I'm sure, knows, there's a link between the two things. Our homeless and housing issue and lack of housing, affordable housing, is creating some of our homeless situations, and we are seeing more and more cases of that. That's more and more evident. I can cite to you the Housing Partnership California released, just released their report on every county in the state as far as the condition and the situation with affordable housing. And in our county currently, 70% of the extremely low-income households in our county are paying more than half of their income on their housing costs, compared to 3% of the moderate-income households. Think about that. 70% of your income is going to housing, or, excuse me, more than 50% of your housing is going to housing costs. Renters in El Dorado County need to earn $35.21 per hour, two and a half times the state minimum wage, to afford the average monthly asking rent of $1,831. So, think about that. Think about all the jobs in our county where you don't make $35 an hour. And so, those folks are either working two jobs, or they're just, again, paying enormous proportions of their income on housing. So, we, this city and our county are, have a real shortfall in affordable housing. And my caution to you, as you think about this policy, is that you are in effect removing housing from the rental stock available for long-term rental. So, the more we allow short-term rentals, by policy and by right, you are moving housing out of its availability to those who need it, who reside here and go to school here or work here and so on. You're costing, you're pushing the cost of housing up, because the market now has fewer units in it, right? Basic economics. You're also accelerating, you're increasing the value of, for those property owners of their property. Why? Because they can charge nightly fees, can't they? And again, it's simple economics. They can earn a lot more money on property by converting it to short-term rentals. And so, that's going to drive property prices up, remove supply, drive costs up. So, we already, we have a bad situation being made worse by policies that allow short-term rentals. So, I would, as you move forward and think about this, I would urge you to consider the impacts and why you would do this, because from our standpoint, you know, we're, we feel like we're scrambling to get more affordable housing. And if you act to liberalize short-term rentals, you are making that problem worse, not better. The second thing, I would also argue that you, you ought to listen to some of your residents who live here next to short-term rentals, because even though there are, there are policies now that don't allow it, short-term renting and Airbnb is going on in your residential neighborhoods. Did you know that? It is happening now. It's, and why? And it's not that the city probably hasn't tried to enforce it, it's just tough to enforce these kind of rules, very tough. So, you already have a problem, you're going to, by opening the door, even a little crack, I worry you're going to make it even worse. And you're going to also spend a lot of money on enforcement to try and enforce the rules that you might put in place, whatever they might be. So, I urge you to be cautious, deliberative, take your time. The other point I'd make is that your policy you have now, you just adopted it in July of, June of 2022. It's not even two years old. And you, your policy that you currently have, allow, has 10 licenses for short-term rentals in business districts, commercial districts, right? And only four of those have been utilized.
Thank you, Mr. Porter, and.
No, I would argue.
I'd like to go over a little, three minutes, but I appreciate your input, and we certainly will give it serious consideration.
Madam Chair, are you going to allow any, I was just, are you going to allow any questions of presenters or not?
I would rather, I think we should discuss that as a group and.
Okay. I just, because I'm trying to understand some things, but that's all right.
I think if we aren't able to resolve it here with our discussions, perhaps we can invite a speaker back up and reopen public comment. Would you be satisfied with that?
I'll go along. You are the chair.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. There are other people who want to speak, so please step up to the podium, and if you would, share your name, and we appreciate you coming down here.
Excuse me. My name is Larissa Luhon. So, I have come forward on this topic with the city council. Specifically, I've provided information to them and have had discussions with them. I do feel that staff has taken liberties with this specific topic and is continuing to do so. I'm very glad that Mr. Morris brought up earlier on that, to remind you commissioners that the recommend, you can make recommendations other than what's written in this ordinance, and I'm going to tell you why. On page 2 of 4 of this presentation, it states, "On January 9th, 2024, the city council directed staff to bring to the planning commission and subsequently, city council proposed regulations for hosted short-term rentals within residential zones." This is factually untrue. I was at that meeting, and I'm really glad that one of the commissioners also mentioned that they listened to that video. The city council did not direct staff to provide you with a presentation for hosted short-term rentals only, which is what has been prepared for you today. They voted on it and passed a motion that staff was directed to provide you with a short-term, short-term residential ordinance within 90 days. First of all, 90 days came and went. They did not follow through with their timeline, and it was not limited to hosted rentals only. So, this entire presentation is being presented to you on something that is untrue. Thankfully, these meetings are recorded. I went through and watched that meeting yesterday, so I do want to bring that to your attention. And I'm very grateful that they're recorded, because that protects the public in these kinds of situations. I want to bring up a couple of other things. I'm glad that you mentioned the El Dorado County ordinance. They do have a vacation home rental ordinance, and I actually called over and spoke with the planning commission with the county this morning, and I also spoke with, I think it was Dina, from the tax, I can't remember the department's name, I had some notes here, tax collector's office. So, I would like to bring to your attention that perhaps you should recommend your staff to look at reflecting a more cohesive ordinance that is more reflective with our entire county. City of Placerville is a small bubble in an entire county. And when I spoke to them this morning, hosted rentals are not under their vacation home rental ordinance. rental ordinance. It's actually incredibly simple. All these regulations that you saw in this presentation today in the county, those are the regulations that they apply to people renting out their entire house. And that is what your staff here is recommending that you impose on our City of Placerville residents. I urge you not to do that. When I spoke to Ms. Dina at the tax collector's office with the county, she said that for hosted rentals, um, this is what they require. You don't go through the planning commission, you call her, she tells you how to set up an online account. She said their department requires you to get a business license, super easy. Within 24 to 48 hours, they review your application, then they open up, um, the transient occupancy tax account, and you're required to pay your transient occupancy tax quarterly. And that's it. You get your business license, you have to pay your fee, and after you pay your fee, you register with the transient occupancy tax. And all these regulations that you saw in this presentation today do not apply to the hosted rentals. Why? Because you have the property owners living on site.
Okay. I allowed you to go a bit over the three minutes. Could you please, uh?
Yes, I'll wrap it up. So I highly encourage you to take note of, um, that meeting because thankfully it was recorded. And I encourage you to direct your staff to have a more open-minded position on this and to perhaps be more reflective and more in partnership with what the county has already established. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Hi, Mandy, Mandy Rodriguez. I appreciate the work that you guys have done, um, but yeah, it's, it actually, Pierre told me he was trying to make it simple and I actually think it could be way simpler. Um, if you see my hands, these are calluses. I have cleaned vacation rentals for 25 years. So when you talk about housing, I'm that person that you pretend that you care about because I am that close. I can't afford to rent actually in Placerville. I can't afford to rent a house here. I am blessed that I was able to buy a home when I did. I'm absolutely blessed and I pinch myself every day. But if I was not able to buy a home, I would not be able to afford rent here. Okay? And I am having the hardest time keeping up with insurance, property taxes, electricity, water, garbage. Okay? Those are the things. So when I have a room that I rent out, I'm not stacking cash, I'm keeping myself from being at that navigation center too. Okay? I've been cleaning houses for 25 years. You can see the calluses on my hands. Women have been renting, single women have been renting rooms in their homes probably since, not probably, since biblical times. Okay? Some people get an OnlyFans. I have a 47-year-old Christian woman. I rent a room so I can pay you guys property taxes. I can pay your wages, right? You guys make a lot more than me. So that's my comment to the housing shortage, okay? The ban in South Lake Tahoe did not prevent, it did not open up housing for, for, uh, what people like to call workforce housing. It did not help, okay? I'm not going to rent a room for free or to a homeless person, okay? Sorry. You can open up your house, that's your project, okay? So with that said, TOT can be collected directly through Airbnb. Most of these short-term rental programs, they can collect it. So you don't have to keep record of every person that ever stayed. That's probably a violation of their privacy anyways, probably totally unconstitutional. As you can see, the amount of people here, there's not a mad rush. And, you know, yeah, I guess theoretically, um, everybody could rent a room in their home, but are they? Or are they gonna share a bathroom? Or they, you know what I mean? I mean, most people don't live alone. There are very few people like me. But it seems like the few that are renting hosted are single women. So we're being discriminated against, I guess. Also, just so you know, $200 a year for a permit is probably pretty reasonable. I think Tahoe's a little bit more, but it's Tahoe. It's not Placerville. You can actually, um, in the county, you appoint somebody to be a call person. Since I clean houses, I actually have some Airbnbs in the county that I clean. And I am registered with the sheriff's department and with the county. There's actually a questionnaire you go on, you, you fill out the questionnaire, you give them all your information. So if there's an issue that they contact me before, and I do the enforcement, right? Hey, Mr. Porter, you're keeping this up.
You've gone a bit over your three minutes.
Okay.
So if you could please wrap up your comments.
Okay. So, um, most people, just one more thing. You have to understand, um, the market is settling itself. Airbnbs are settling itself because people realize how much work it takes to do it. Not everybody wants to clean. It's, and, and it's not, and to clean a room is a very small fee. So you're not going to get someone to show up to clean a room for 30 bucks, right? So this is not gonna be a mad rush.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate your insight.
Thank you. And 25 years, I'm welcome, you're welcome to ask me any questions.
Thank you for coming down and sharing your thoughts with us. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Um, my name is Tim Durbin and, um, I live here in the city of Placerville with my wife, Lena. And we are here to speak in support of the current prohibition on short-term rentals. I'm gonna tell you a little story. Some of the, uh, economic advisory commission has already heard this. So we live next to a house in a residential neighborhood that is owned by a gentleman in Arizona. He operates it as a short-term rental on Airbnb and VRBO, and it's been a disaster for us and the neighborhood. Uh, the city is aware of what he's doing, um, and they've done what I presumably what they can to stop his hotel business in our neighborhood, yet we still have people there all the time. New people just showed up two hours ago. Um, and there's parking issues, there's noise issues. When I have a noise problem, I have to call the police. Nobody's very happy about this. There's nobody to enforce any of this stuff. So I don't know how he's getting away with it or whatever the fines currently are. He appears to just be rolling those into the fees that he charges for renters. So this house has been red-tagged for most of the last eight months and still rentals multiple times a week. These people show up, they don't care that there's a red tag that says on the front of the house, substandard building, do not occupy. I'm not kidding. Please come up if you're, if you're curious, I'll take you to the house. It's right next door. Big red tag on the front, substandard building, do not occupy. And it indicates that it's a misdemeanor to occupy that house. And still he has renters multiple times a week. More cars, there's cars on the street, there's people, there's noise. So I think that the fact that we've been dealing with this now for about a year really gives, uh, the, really makes the point that enforcement is the problem. And the city doesn't currently have the resources, the staffing or the budget to enforce the, the current, uh, restriction on short-term rentals. And, you know, he's, he's a bad actor. For him, it's all, this is all a business. He lives in Arizona, he has no connection to this community, he's never been there. So I see three problems with the city's plan to allow short-term rentals and hosted properties. First of all, how are you gonna enforce any of this? How are you gonna figure out that it's, the person actually lives there and that they actually are there checking the person in and that they're there the whole time? There's no way that these, that that can be enforced. So please talk to Greg Horsefall and the good people in the building department. Ask them what they think about this. And I think you'll really hear a lot, because I talk to them regularly about this property and this issue. And they're doing all they can, but there's just, there's no, there's no money, there's no budget, there's no mechanism for enforcement. And you can't call the cops on a zoning problem. The cops don't respond to a zoning issue, okay? So the people come in, they check in, they walk right past the red tag on the front of the house. And, and, and this guy in Arizona continues to make all of his money off this hotel that is next door to us. So also regarding enforcement, how is the city gonna determine that a person doesn't have a hosted rental in the city of Placerville, one in the city of Eld, or in city of South Lake, one in Eldorado County? It's possible that somebody could, there's not gonna be coordination between these things. So it's, it's a system that's already ripe for abuse. Second point I want to make is that you, you might think that, oh, Airbnb and VRBO and these other platforms, that they care. They do not care. I've, I've filed so many countless complaints with them about the property next door, and their response is to say that, uh, they fall back on this legal technicality, that they are only a platform for advertising the properties and not at all responsible for enforcement. So you can't count on these things to say like, oh, like, like we told them, we thought, oh, if we just point out to them the city of Placerville doesn't allow this, that they'll take it down. No. And how they get away with that, I'm not clear because they're clearly making money off of this. So there's, you can't, it's, they, they aren't gonna partner with the city in enforcement at all. So how, who is gonna do any of the enforcement of this?
And I have to ask you to, uh, please conclude your comments.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. I have copies of my statement if anybody wants to.
Oh, appreciate that.
Madam Chair, I was just gonna ask, uh, I, I assume this is a workshop format so that we can come back hopefully and hear more from, from these people.
Um, I was going to have, um, staff address some things and then we could.
That'd be nice.
Have a little more open, and so if we open public hearing again, uh, certainly.
Thank you.
If we can't resolve those questions.
Hi.
Hi.
Sorry for the interruption.
No problem. I'm Lena Durbin. Uh, that was my husband who just spoke. And, um, yeah, that's the, the biggest concern for us listening to this is that we know from experience every day over the last year that it's very hard to stop a short-term rental that is, um, you know, acting in violation of our city ordinance that exists now. Uh, so, you know, we have a very big question about, you know, how, where are you going to be able to enforce a hosted short-term rental. Um, you know, we've suffered from, you know, neighborhood disturbances, uh, property damage, um, you know, big loud parties, events happening at the, the location next door, uh, animals running loose in the neighborhood, you know, all of these things. And there's just, seems to be nothing that we can do about it. Um, and then I guess the other question that I would have and the research that I would want to see is just what kind of demand there is for a hosted rental. When Airbnb came about a little over a decade ago, this was the idea, like, wouldn't it be great to allow people to monetize the extra space in their home? Um, and that would be great, but very quickly it turned into something different, which is turning homes and housing stock into hotels, uh, because that's where the demand is. Um, you know, I, I'm not sure that there is a lot of demand for hosted short-term rentals, so I'm, I just, you know, I, I question that. But anyways, happy to answer any questions about our experience, which has been very frustrating, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kathy Lishman, Placerville resident. And I'm sorry you're not giving people more time because you need to hear everything everybody has to say. Since this was advertised as a hosted short-term rental agenda item, to me, that's the only topic you should be discussing. I encourage you to listen to the board of supervisors meeting up in South Lake Tahoe from la, the, um, May 14th. It's, it starts, and it's the first item on the agenda. Up in the county, and it's, it's not for the city of South Lake Tahoe, it's for the county. The county has been dealing with short-term rental problems for 20, they said for 22 years, and they're still dealing with them. The county wants people, they, they have hosted, they're, they're, they're having problems with hosted, they want to tighten that up. You should watch that meeting and see all the things they're doing. They have three code enforcers now, and they're still trying to figure out how to do this. They had a committee of 13 people where people applied and they had 13 people, and they met from all different, um, areas and interests and those for, those against. And they came up with some things that they unanimously agreed on. So I'm anxious to see going forward. They want to collect data after it goes in to make sure that they know what they know, and I'm afraid that we're kind of doing it on a shoestring. I also feel that a lot of the people that are really supporting these are people that are already doing them illegally. So, um, the first person in Tahoe who spoke had a lot to say, and it, it meant a lot to me, and I want to share with you some of his thoughts. He served on the committee. And he, um, is a full-time ski instructor up at Tahoe. Um, I don't think it's in the summer though unless it's water skiing. He said a tiny minority of citizens, um, become addicted to the income. And they're loud and they, they have a voice and, and they're not the only ones that should be heard. I'll bet 99% of the people in this town don't even know that this is a possibility. He said those living around them are expected to embrace the stranger conveyor next door. That as if their right to monetize R1 zoned housing trumps everybody else's rights. Our community has neither a moral nor legal obligation to ensure their investment returns, but they're able to raise a disproportionately loud voice. And that it becomes for-profit mini hotels in our neighborhoods. In Placerville, we've been dealing with illegal rentals, even though the owners know it's illegal, they continue to do it. We celebrate Placerville as a community of neighborhoods and neighbors. We have lots of small neighborhoods, houses close together. We need to think carefully as we review the information. I think it needs to be owner occupied. The county is talking at that meeting about updating the hosted, making stricter restrictions on the hosted, better accountability for hosted rentals. I think it needs to be owner occupied. They talked about going and finding the homeowners exemptions. So they, even though they've studied it and they've looked at it, they have more things they want to do. It needs to be owner occupied. Hiring someone to live in the home to host, to be the host makes it more of a business. We need to protect our neighborhoods. Enforcement is key, and I suggest that you start simply. Do it simple, not complicated. Don't allow ADUs to be used. I couldn't quite get what the county, what Pierre was saying about if it's this or that. So if you could clarify the part about the ADUs and the person living in the house, it's only in the house that they could rent a room, I would think. And I think inspections need to take place. According to this classic tale, one cold night, a camel asks his master if he can put his head in the tent for warmth. "By all means and wel, by all means welcome," said the man, and the camel stretches his head into the tent. Soon after, the camel inquires if he may bring his neck and front legs inside. Again, the master agrees. Finally, the camel asks, "May I not stand wholly within?" With pity, the master beckons him into the warm tent. But when the camel comes forward, it becomes clear that the tent is too small for them both. "I think," the camel said, "that there is not room for both of us in here. It will be best for you to stand outside as you are the smaller. There will then be room enough for me." And with that, the man was forced outside the tent. The fable is a warning that small, seemingly harmless acts, even made with good intentions, can sometimes have negative repercussions. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any other members of the public that want to speak to this issue right now? Okay. I thank you all for your comments. Uh, before I, uh, we bring this back to the commission for further discussion, there are a couple of things that I would like staff to, uh, address before we move forward. And I think, uh, the, the first came from the second speaker who, um, implied that somehow we are in violation of what the, uh, city council directed. And, uh, Mr. Ewaskin, can you please clarify? I, you know, um, I, I feel like we're following what the city council had directed staff to do. Could you please respond to that?
It is staff's opinion that based on the minute order, it did not direct a general plan amendment. But again, I think the planning commission can make any recommendation it wishes. So staff is bringing forward with recommended or at least suggested regulations for hosted short-term rentals. Not to say you can direct us to come back and if you want to do non-hosted vacation rentals or any other, you know, change to what we have before you.
Okay. So it's my, um, feeling that we are, you know, in compliance with what the direction was from, uh, city council. Mr. Morris, you have something to add?
I actually have the.
I actually have the minutes from that meeting. I can read what the direction of the council was.
Okay.
Before I do that, I want to mention, the primary focus, what was discussed when we were discussing that, was on hosted rental. However, I will state, this is what the motion said. Councilmember Sarah Gosha made a second motion that the city council direct staff to request review of a short-term rental ordinance by the planning commission within 90 days, and then present the ordinance to the city council for consideration. So that's what their motion was. Well, it did not say hosted.
Did not specify hosted.
And we are working on, this is the first step in getting that ordinance put together. So that is what their direction was. It did not say hosted. That's why I'm saying, I think that if you want to review something, an expansion of that, and give a recommendation to staff, we can bring back more information to you and look in that direction. But I wanted to just clarify that, of what the direction was of council.
Thank you very much. And, you know, I appreciate that staff already has a lot to do, and the fact that this didn't come in within a 90-day time limit, that's, you know, unfortunate, but I'm sure that you did with all deliberate haste and speed. So thank you for that. And also, one more question, I just would like staff to take care of the concern Ms. Lishman just addressed. I know that you already gave this, covered ADUs, but just one more, once more for the record, please clarify how ADUs play into this process.
Yeah, staff is not proposing that we would allow use of accessory dwelling in it as a short-term rental, primarily because, you know, short-term rentals are something that's allowed by state regulation, by right, to provide for additional housing, not lodging, and also especially since the more recent laws have changed over the past few years, that they get reduced fees, they don't have to provide parking, there's a lot of, a lot of changes have been made to the requirements where the city can't impose, you know, fees. If you're below a certain square footage, you're not going to pay any impact fees. So, and again, that's provide for housing as opposed to lodging. But again, there's no full prohibition against it from the state.
Thank you for elaborating on that. I appreciate it. Other commissioners, do you have questions either for staff to kind of resolve any issues that were brought up by the speakers?
Point of clarification, is the public hearing closed? And you've brought it back to-
We're in workshop-
Are we in workshop, or are we in-
We're in workshop-
Discussion, so it's not a public hearing per se then?
Yeah, Chair, if I may, this is a workshop, so I think-
Gotcha.
The council has a lot of flexibility in, you know, how you want to run the workshop to get the most, you know, frankness from the audience.
Let's go ahead and set out some ground rules. This is a little different for this body. We don't have workshops like this very often, but to my thinking, it was good to hear from staff, you know, to get the background, and then from everyone in the audience, and we may give you another chance to speak. So, but what I'd like to do is have, at this point, have commissioners speak to, you know, this issue, and see if we can, you know, move this along, so that we can develop our recommendations to send on to staff and city council.
So-
Go ahead, Mr.-
I mean, I have just some thoughts on this. As I read the original work prepared by staff, and it said hosted, the first thing, and it seems like it's a common theme through what the problems are, this can only work, in my view, if it's an individual's primary residence, and they live there. Anything else, and then they can wrap it up in an LLC for business purposes, but they have to live there. And if somebody is then living there, I don't, I think I understand economics, I don't see how they are decreasing the housing stock if they decide to rent out a room in the house that they already live in, right? Because they already live there, okay? And then what about, what about board and care homes? I mean, somebody has a home, they want to turn it into a board and care home for infirm people. That's going to reduce housing stock, isn't it? Yet I think we can all admit that infirm people might need a place to live, so-
And I think, isn't that covered under another ordinance?
That's not my point, though. My point, not in terms of regulation, in terms of housing stock. So I guess I'm saying, I'm not so moved by the housing stock argument. I'm also not moved by the, somebody's making money and their property argument. With regards to the nuisance component, the rotating stranger phenomenon, if you will, this is, this is a business, right? Somebody is making money, they've turned their, a portion of their home into a business. We already have ordinance that say, "You can operate a business out of your residence, so long as you do not deprive your neighbors of the free and fair use of their home, that you don't impact them," okay? Whether it's noise or odors. Pierre and others may recall that, you know, my brewery started out, right, a home business, and I couldn't be brewing at all hours of the night and make noise, right? And so, you know, I could be a cabinet maker, and as long as I'm not running my saw, you know, after 10:00 PM and before, you know, 7:00 AM, and I'm not getting big deliveries and whatnot, I get to do that. And I think we need to be careful not to restrict people that way. I really think that we ought to look and see what the county is doing. I really think we ought to, as Kathy Lishman suggested, we should look at that Board of Supervisor meeting. I think it would be well in our interest to do it. I think on balance, this makes sense. The biggest thing for me is hosted is just too nebulous. I think we need to be absolutely clear that these have to be owner-occupied properties. And then I think there's a way to verify that as part of the application process, either come in and show title, or you, you know, and your utility bills, or whatever you need to do to show that you own the property. I think tax bill is a good one, too. So there's ways, I think, that you can verify that. So I think, I think this is possible. I think it's doable with the proper setup and restrictions.
Thank you very much. You know, I just wanted to follow up before I turn it over to you, Mr. Carter, about the affordability. One thing that occurred to me is that if a homeowner could keep their house by renting a short-term, renting out a room on a short-term basis, rather than losing their home, that's something that occurred to me. So it's, I realize that, we feel that some folks are doing this just as a cash cow, if you will, a money-making venture, but there may be some other instances where it's actually a benefit to, in another situation. But go ahead.
I just had a quick suggestion, that when we actually begin to get into the nuts and bolts of this, if I could just suggest that perhaps we go, instead of each of us giving overarching thoughts on all of the points, perhaps we go point by point in this plan, and speak about each individual paragraph, slot, or bullet point, one at a time.
It's a lot to chew on.
It's a lot, and I can see how we can get way in the weeds.
My brain's all over the place.
And I'm the same way. I have a ton of comments, but I just, if you're okay with it, I think it would be a lot easier for us to process if we talk about each individual item at a time, and kind of process it that direction. And I would also love to have some more questions for some of the couple of people that spoke earlier. But anyway, just a quick suggestion, as we start to get into nuts and bolts.
Okay. Any other general comments at this time?
Just one thing that I was looking at is reading through those documents that we got today, because I think something that came up in here that struck me, that is coming up here, too, and around commissioners' questions around hosting, is that in the county plan, they are talking about increasing the requirements for applications in order to further concretely identify the host of the property and make sure. So that is something that while previously it was just a business license and whatever else it was that said, it is now, they're moving towards that being more concrete. And I think this kind of touches back to what my original question was intended to touch on, is when I read through some of this information, it's meaty, and it's hearty, and they're really moving towards data-driven outcomes and, or decisions made on a lot of hard work that has clearly been done in time, that has been invested from a lot of people. And so when I was comparing these two today, I do wonder, and I think we should continue to talk about it, but if we really should take time to kind of look at these two documents, and how they could be integrated to strengthen ours, while falling in line with what the county is doing, which I think will just create a nice cohesion between the expectations. So I guess that's such all to say, that there's a lot of information in this Board of Supervisors documentation, and with the meeting reference, that I think we definitely want to consider, at least considering tying in, if not just pausing and really looking at strengthening this to make it more cohesive. Does that make sense?
You know, in the interest of time, we do have other things on our agenda, and I appreciate your delving into this in such detail, but what we have in front of us is, you know, a draft, and staff is already, you're following what's happening in other jurisdictions, particularly the county of South Lake Tahoe, and probably up and down the state. And I think we've taken public comment, we should respond to that, and I would prefer that we focus in on deficiencies in the draft. You know, staff, you're hearing what we're saying about enforcement, proving ownership. And so I would rather, tonight, give staff those kinds of high-level, you know, directions, and then take a look at the next draft, to make sure that it addresses all the concerns that we have, and then what we've heard tonight from all the folks who came down here to share their thoughts with us. So since we don't have just a workshop devoted to this, and it does seem like we've taken in a lot of good information, but I'm not sure that the concerns can't be addressed in the next draft of the ordinance. So that's the way I would prefer to do it. So I, rather than going point by point, I think it would be time better spent to give general comments at this point, and have staff, when they return to, with us, with the next ordinance, hopefully, you know, any deficiencies that we've identified would be addressed at that point.
I have a-
Could you just, I-
Yes.
You've had your light on, so I wanted to give you a chance to speak first.
I concur with a couple colleagues. We've talked about the need to look at these materials, section by section, with some detail. I have concern when we get this agenda and the package on a Friday night, and then we're considering it on Tuesday. It's a subject of considerable importance, and it will last us for a number of years. It seems like more time would be helpful. When I outlined a couple issues earlier, they were generic. And then I hear a couple who's describing a specific example, and that's worth going at with some detail. And the reason is, because if you don't have enforcement mechanisms, if you don't have a system of being able to call police and say, "The noise ordinance is in violation," or whatever it is, then none of this will be of much import, because there's no enforcement. I know of one person who had an example like this. It was my housekeeper a few years ago, who's no longer living in the area. But she had a place, and Airbnb, it was advertised on Airbnb, and didn't get a license. And then we hear a couple who's describing a horror story. I would like to have those examples examined in considerable detail. And then, you're right about the idea that a workshop would require some more time. And I've heard some expertise from the audience. So I'd like to be able to look at what the county came up with today. I'd like to look at and hear that hearing that was held in Lake Tahoe, and see, because we don't want those problems repeated. It seems to me that on the good side, the value of it is, right now, we don't have rental housing for, you know, for hotels. We have them on the books as to be planned, but it's not coming about anytime soon. So if you have a manageable Airbnb-type system now, you get taxation that we benefit from. If people stay longer, there'll be increased sales tax revenue. So that's the good side. The bad side is, we don't want the disasters we see up in Lake Tahoe, where they now have a ballot measure to put a tax on people who have vacancies for substantial parts of the year. So my inclination is, I really think that maybe another time where we specifically have a night devoted to a workshop, where we can go into these point by point, because, trust me, if, I'm sure my colleagues have questions, too, but it'd be very lengthy for some of the specific questions. Like, for example, it's a small point, but when you talk about spas and hot tubs, but you don't exclude having a swimming pool, I've got one, could we have a swimming pool party at 2:00 in the morning? There's a lot of refinements that this could benefit from, and I'm not sure it's going to be something that we could do, at least, I don't feel comfortable being able to do it tonight. That's my view.
Oh, that's right.
I just wanted to ask, on the parking, so this would be item 10, page 3 or 4. I'm trying to see how this would work. It says not to exceed two vehicles. Is that two vehicles per rented room, then? So if I had a four-bedroom home, and I'm going to rent three of the four, because I'm living there, right? And I have enough space for six vehicles, then? Two vehicles per room, plus my vehicles, right? That's how, this is envisioned to work? Item 10?
Yeah, I would think that the two vehicles is two vehicles per room.
Okay. Yeah, that seems generous, so, okay. I just want to make sure I was clear. And we, so language in there, might need clarifying language that would say, "Two vehicles per rented room," would, you know, meets the off-site parking requirement, and sufficient. And do we require any, is, would staff propose any type of parking space delineation, or maybe I missed that? Designated or marked? They don't have to be designated, just marked, anyway. Here's, huh? Sir?
It's on the site plan.
Oh, it's in the site plan. Okay, yeah, thank you. I knew Commissioner Carter would help me out. Thank you, sir.
Just, I'm just kind of following up what they said, is I'm kind of feeling the same way. I'm not sure that I feel that we could wordsmith and strengthen or clarify everything that we'd like to achieve on there. My sort of thought process when I was coming in with this is, it's going to get something on the books. I didn't know that we were going to potentially talk about unhosted ones. That wasn't really on my radar, so I'm definitely not comfortable, like, making some policy changes. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. Should be separate.
Yeah, so I'm not comfortable moving into that area right now. I do think that this draft, it hits a lot of points, and if we needed to get something onto the books, that then we could come back around when, say, the county work, which I think references something like August, gets more clarified, and we go, "Oh, my gosh, look at their findings, look what they have found." That's relevant to what we're maybe experiencing. I also think, and this was touched on, the demand is going to be really interesting to know. So I don't know, I don't really, I'm not really making a statement, except that it's a lot to chew on, and it's a lot to, and I want to be thorough, and I want to be fair to both sides, because both sides have points, but I am very sensitive to the residential experience of people to, from Airbnbs. So I'm hesitant to throw out this, when we clearly have questions about a lot of different areas of this, yeah, especially enforcement.
I'm really naive in this field. I really am. So I've had the opportunity to stay in a lot of vacant homes on vacation, right? And, but when, when we say Airbnb, are those always unhosted?
Not always.
I think it varies.
Okay.
And it's, you know, what's allowed by the jurisdiction.
Okay. Well, I concur with Commissioner Lepa, that I have a lot of comfort with, frankly, with some minor tweaks, with hosted. The owner lives there, okay? I have a lot of confidence with that. Unhosted, I think that's where we would need to be very, very careful. I think it's doable. I mean, like I said, I've stayed in a lot of homes, and I would hate to have that opportunity taken away, because we find it to be quite useful and pleasant, actually. So that's, that should be completely separate, separate than this. I think totally bifurcated. I would never want to do unhosted. This should be done separately.
I've had some, also some experience with the Airbnb, the options, and what I see, the direction we've taken, the city's taken right now with the hosted versus the not hosted, we just have such a constrained housing stock. And, you know, we've heard from various people in the audience tonight, so I- So I agree with everyone up here. I think that we, the city, can make this hosted STR approach work. Of course, the non-hosted, it works in other communities where there is an abundance of housing stock. I'm not coming up with the name of one of those communities right now. However, yes, let's keep that separate and see if the city can make this work. Having the owner there, I think, is going to put a lot of limits on the behavior and hopefully we won't encounter the problems that are prevalent that we've heard so much about in South Lake Tahoe, for instance, in other communities. Just to further summarize what we've said. And so this is just, I want to make sure staff's clear on, you know, where the commission is coming from. I think we generally agree that this is a good start, that we would like to have a little more time and perhaps another workshop devoted to this when you have the next draft for our consideration. And at that point, perhaps we should go point by point. So just to summarize, having the owner there, proving that that is the owner, the affidavit that that is their primary residence is very important to us. This enforcement issue keeps coming up and we need to have more information on how the city can take this on from the outset. One thing that we haven't touched back on, it did come up in the presentation, is analysis of the limits. That was something that was, I can't remember what slide that was, kind of toward the end. But I, you know, I don't have that experience in what would be the best approach. But I would like, you know, staff, as you're developing the next round, come back with some proposals on, you know, what other communities have done and what might work for Placerville. Are we talking about numbers per street, side by side? You know, I hate at this point to restrict it or restrict it or make it too wide open so that these short-term rentals become a problem. So look more closely at the numbers in our community, the numbers of these STRs in our community. Clarify the parking and how that would work out. And so that's my summary of what I'm hearing from the body tonight. And also, I just want to emphasize that I think we would like to have a session devoted to this for your next draft. I think what we're hearing from the community, we want to make sure that their concerns are, have been addressed in this. And...
Yeah, Chair Keeney, if staff could just comment. You know, basically, this is a workshop. This is meant to be, I would say, the old saying, the 30,000 elevation level. So what staff was hoping the commission would do is just take a look at some of the areas that we're proposing on regulating. I mean, we had, I think, 17 of them, plus another ones that we could look at. If you want us to look at those other things, such as limitations, what have you, we can do that. But we're trying to get a consensus from the commission as to, are some of these regulations too restrictive, not restrictive enough? Is there areas that we've missed? Sounds like enforcement and clarification or a way of showing that the property owner is, who he or she is, lives on the property, those kinds of things. That's what we're looking for. So it's not necessarily getting into the weeds. We will come back, then, with a draft ordinance. It may take another workshop, maybe two workshops, who knows? But we will be able to come back to you with an actual ordinance, then, on how we've addressed, we've written down, you know, copious notes on everything that's been said by the public and the commissioners. So hopefully, we can come back with something that at least addresses some of the concerns that we've heard.
That's great to hear. And again, I think we've gotten a lot of good information. Let's see, who had their microphone?
Go ahead, Ryan. I didn't know yours was...
Yeah, anyway, this is something that was brought up by one of the speakers also. Number 13, about maintaining record of every night, including name and contact information of the guests. I hope that's illegal. That's a hard no for me. That 13 has to go. I don't, I can't imagine an instance where the city would want or need to know guest information, including contact for everybody that stays in every bedroom in the city. I could never support any regulations that have that included. So for me, number 13, I think, has to go. I hope it's illegal. If it's not, it makes me never want to stay at an Airbnb again.
Are any other points like that? Yeah, please just mention.
Yeah, that was going to be what I was going to say. So I do want to still give a little insight into what my general impressions were. And I actually do support the ability for YouTube demand records, if you need to, because I had a friend who had an Airbnb illegally in Santa Barbara, actually, Pierre. And Pierre and I are Santa Barbara alumni. So she did it, and then when they got caught, they actually backcharged them the tax that they should have been paying the whole time. So I'd like to see something like that, too, with a little more teeth on the books so that if we do decide to pursue enforcement on a high level, it actually comes back to the city and really is serious. And, excuse me, and one of the speakers mentioned TOT through Airbnb. I think that would be nice, too, if we could investigate mechanisms by which the tax is collected without sort of, let me write the check to the city. You know, make sure we're with the most current, modern ways that we can easily collect those funds and not have it be a chasing down of things or an expectation that everyone is paying in good faith. Because again, if we are going to have these, I want the city to benefit from it and be able to manage them. And I think that's really important. In general, I think the hosted, I'm very much more leery of the non-hosted. But the hosted, I think, if we put some teeth to it and really have it be like what's discussed, where I have rooms, I have space, and I am not hosting weddings, I'm not disturbing my neighbors. But we do lack places for people to stay in certain ways. So I think that completely eliminating that as an option is not the best, but I also do want to see some teeth on it. The, let me see, I had so many thoughts in general. But as listening, I'm more inclined to go towards the actual owner needing to occupy, even if they have multiple properties. Because I think that then you feel the weight of it. I know that if I was the couple next door to one and there was no one there, I would be insanely frustrated as well. So I'm leaning towards personally having it be really owner-occupied versus hiring someone to run that. I think that's a little bit more manageable. And I think those were the big things that I wanted. I think we should look at Santa Barbara and see what they're doing because they've had big issues with it, but they're a little bigger, but still. And then I'd like to know more about the demand because I saw in some of the documents, there was a waiting list of like 10 people. It wasn't a huge amount of people coming in versus Tahoe, which obviously is just a different beast. So while they're in our county, I do think we have to look at the difference between the cities. That's all I can think of right now that I'd really like clarification on when we come back around to this. But otherwise, as I said, if we need to get something on the books, I'm not totally against this, but I do think we could strengthen and clarify it.
Question for staff, first of all. Any idea, Pierre or Cleve, how prevalent this is in other communities throughout the state? I mean, you gave us a few examples, which is great, but in terms of, you know, how much of this is going on elsewhere? A lot, it sounds like, particularly if you're, maybe not in Sanger. But if you're in a destination community or something, right? Probably, like Lake Tahoe comes up, right? So fairly common?
Oh, Lake Tahoe has a large amount of short-term rentals.
But I mean, throughout the state, there are a lot of communities that are dealing with this and have policies. So we have a lot to draw from.
We do have a lot to draw from, yeah. Any, you know, destination community, I'm sure, has short-term rentals in them. Unless you're like Carmel, you know, Carmel, we wanted to look at Carmel because it was a small city.
Yeah.
It does not allow short-term rentals at all.
Okay.
Period.
All right. So that's probably a good point because while it's absolutely true that non-owner-occupied vacancy rentals, right, which we're not dealing with, unhosted, certainly could theoretically have an impact on housing stock. At the same time, we have a total dearth of hotel availability. And if we want people to stay in Placerville, why don't people stay in Placerville? Because there's no place to stay in Placerville. People stay in Nevada City, right? Because there are places to stay in Nevada City. So there are other needs that we have to balance. It's not just, you know, one need or consideration that we have to be concerned about. There are other things that we have to be concerned about and goals and objectives that we want to try to accomplish. Going back to item 13, so Commissioner Carter, I'm sure that you rent hotels or whatever and you would provide information, even if you're paying cash for the, you'd have to give me your name and whatever. So what if, and this is a great way, I think, that the city could get the records. What if, so these are businesses. If somebody's going to be making money, they got to get a business license to do this, right? And then what if the application, the contract that is referenced here, goes through a city-run portal? So you want to rent, you want to rent this room? Okay, I got this room for it. Here you go. You go to the city's portal, you put in all your information. Now the city's got whatever information they need for records. Boom, done. Okay?
That sounds like a lot of work for the city.
It does.
And I think...
You set it up once and it's done.
You can subpoena them from Airbnb and get the same information.
Okay, but I mean, if...
I appreciate the spirit.
They would have, they'd have immediate data. I mean, boom.
Yeah.
We know how many are active, et cetera, and how many days people are staying. And, you know, you'd know information on rates. I mean, it'd be, once the portal's built, then it's done.
Well, it's got to be...
I don't know. I just appreciate the spirit. But yeah, I think that it's already, it's like a double collection to me and you can get it from Airbnb. But, and I think, you know, I think having the ability, whether we say we want the contact information of the guests, sure, that could be a little massage. But I think getting the information, you know, when you do business with someone, you fall under their rules. And if they're collecting and keeping that and willing to give it out, then unfortunately, that's something that you agree to. I don't know if unfortunately, it just is. And so, you know, I'm not necessarily against pulling the records because I don't think that the intention is to go after individual information, anyway. It's to get numbers. So I think we could exclude some of the contact information, but I'm firmly in favor of being able to pull records for, if we need to, for enforcement purposes.
Would we treat historic districts any different than other parts of the community? Okay, just asking.
Okay. I just made a note here. One more thing I would like the staff to investigate is if verified complaints or it would have to be actual violations, add enforcement, then your permit is pulled. And perhaps that applicant is blackballed from, for a certain period of time, from reapplying for another permit if we have a bad actor under our ordinance. I don't know if that's something that we can require. But, you know, we have some pretty stiff violations. But as someone pointed out, you know, if they just roll that into the cost of business, then we don't take care of our problem. And I think if it's a property that is repeatedly impacting the neighborhood, then the city should write into the ordinance the ability to pull that permit. So that's something we hadn't specifically, we kind of talked around it. I just want to make sure that that's something that goes into the enforcement issue.
Yeah, Chair Keeney, I would just add that the permit would be issued under a temporary permit. Temporary...
Right, they only go for, that's right.
So it's only good for one year. Our current one's in the commercial district. So if we have a problem, short-term rental, we're not going to renew the permit.
No, it's already built into that. So hopefully, the complaints wouldn't build up faster than 365.
Manager, just kind of separate, but we heard a pretty horrific story from someone this evening, which sounded to me much more like a nuisance issue. And I would just encourage the folks that kind of brought that story to get together with the city and bring it to their attention. Because to me, that, we, our enforcement is generally driven by complaints. I think that's how we operate, for the most part. That complaint really needs to go to the city ma, sorry, Cleve, but it really needs to go to the city manager. This is the man right here that you need to take that complaint to because this sounds, this sounds horrific.
Yeah, it's...
Okay, this doesn't sound, really, it sounds actually kind of outside the concerns that we would expect to have.
In fact, those are the kinds of problems we're trying to avoid by requiring there to be the owner present. So anyway, I agree with you.
I need to say, I'm in contact with the building department and Greg Horsfall fairly regularly. I try not to bug him too much because I know he's doing what he can. Every time I talk to him, that's what he says. But for example, the other day, somebody ripped the red tag off the front of the house, which is illegal. And, you know, so I called them, "Hey, so did you guys take down the red tag? Or did somebody rip that down?" "No, somebody must have ripped that down." So somebody probably working for the owner. Because I know, I know one woman showed up and saw the red tag on the front of the house and lost her mind and was calling Airbnb. And they actually suspended, Airbnb learned about this. They suspended his account for about a week and then reinstated it. So that's how much they care about working and enforcing any of this stuff. So I try to not be a big pain in Greg's side, but, you know...
And I appreciate you telling us about your personal experience. It really does carry a lot of weight and...
It's not fun. And actually, currently, there's no deck on the back of that house.
But I'm going to have to ask you to step down, please, you know, raise your attention to staff. It's really not within our jurisdiction, but since we've opened up public comment again...
Yeah, Chair Keeney, if I can just, just a brief comment on the speaker. We are aware of the situation there. Not only is it an illegal Airbnb happening, but there's a lot of other issues when the applicant, or when the speaker was stating he's been in conversations with Mr. Horsfall. He's our building official. We have a lot of building violations there. You know, a lot of unpermitted work was done and we're trying to get him through that. You know, we're trying to work with the owner and get through that process as well. But it has been a real problem for us.
Okay. I appreciate that. Since we did open up public comment, Ms. Roger, just one second, please. I'm going to open this up to other members of the audience. We do have other business tonight. And if you please could keep your comments limited to just a minute or so. And if it's something that we did not address, please bring that to our attention.
Well, I just want to point out that, and I, you know, no disrespect to what's happening with you, but this is, on the agenda, it does say hosted. So, and I'm guilty of showing up to the city council asking for hosted when they were doing short-term rentals or even commercials I showed up. So I get it. But we are talking about a hosted. And in my vast experience, which I will, I mean, I cleaned houses when people would just put a wooden sign on their deck at Heavenly and said, "Call this number," right? And then it evolved to Craigslist and all these things. And I will tell you, even in Kirkwood...
Is there anything, please?
Yes, this is of value because even in Kirkwood...
What we need to know is if we have not addressed something that's of a concern.
This is of value. So let me tell you, my experience is of value, is Tahoe had a very bad experience. But if you look at Kirkwood, that's Alpine County, right? And Kirkwood has never had really issues with the lodging. And I was a building manager of 64 units. And people go to Kirkwood and they are actually going there to ski. So they are in bed by 9:00 o'clock. It is a different area. Here, when we have, even my Airbnbs that are in the county, if it's a wedding, people come, they'll get ready and they're gone. And they're partying at the wedding. So when they come home, so we're talking about a bedroom. You're not going to pack it with people. There's not going to be beach ball, you know what I mean? So you feel for your case.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate you supporting our decision. And yes, if you'd like to, if there's something we haven't covered in our recommendation to staff, please take a minute to let us know what that is.
So I'm going to try to hit these bullet points very quickly for you. So let me see. Firstly, I do want to remind you, even though it's mentioned that the document was narrowed down to hosted rental, we did hear from Mr. Morris that what the motion was passed by city council...
Oh, okay, we need to know what's new, please.
Right, right. But it's to direct you to create...
In the interest of time, please.
Yes, I am aware of that. A full ordinance, and it was not specific to hosted rental. That's something that the staff took liberties with. So I would like to remind you of that. Secondly, there was a comment earlier that would this ordinance treat historic districts any differently? And the thought was, no, that's actually inaccurate. The bed and breakfast ordinance for city of Placerville already covers that and it's actually specific to historic districts. They are already treated differently.
Right. Right.
That doesn't need to be covered here. The other thing that I wanted to mention on is just to remind you, the entire county already allows for vacation home rentals for entire houses and for the hosted rental. Would be the only location in an entire county that wouldn't have the same rights. Noting on that, one of the things I did ask the planning commission with the county earlier today, they, I asked them, would properties with ADUs be allowed to have short-term rentals? They said the ADU itself could not be rented.
Right.
As a short-term rental, but the main house could.
So, again.
However, I do wanna point out to you, the counties that were recommend, compared in this draft, didn't include Sacramento County, which is a lot closer than Benicia and a few others that were mentioned. Sacramento County does allow ADUs to be rented as a short-term rental if they're permitted, if they're permitted prior to January first of 2020.
Our ordinance doesn't include that, or our draft ordinance is not going to include that, so.
Right, but you have the right to make other recommendations to staff, and Sacramento County does support that because the law allows for it. And I would like you to.
Well, that's.
That's, that's, I think, Madam Chair, respectfully, I, I think that's a legitimate point, and, and I think a comparison with Sacramento County, we, we don't have to agree with it, but, but I think, I think bringing up the point that it's doable and it's not, you know, outside of the orbit.
The, the ADU issue?
Yes, I, I mean, no, no, the, the AD, I mean, if, if that's factual.
No, I, I, I just, I have to disagree, strongly disagree with you.
I will, I will, I just wanna mention.
California state law regarding accessory dwelling units.
Hold on, Madam, please.
The city attorney corrected staff on a recorded meeting that they were wrong, and I will gladly find the date and time, because I do have that in my record, and it was already pointed out to city council. Your city attorney corrected the staff, they were wrong in that interpretation.
I do have one question for the speaker, if I may.
I would like to point that out to you, thank you.
I do have, I, just one question for you, just a yes or no question. Are you a proponent for vacation rentals, non-hosted vacation rentals in the city?
I think that, yes.
That's a yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm not challenging you on that at all. I, I think it'd be, I think it would be a legitimate exercise for staff to see if Sacramento County allows for ADUs to be used as short-term rentals. I mean, I don't know if it's, she says they do, I don't know if it's true or not.
Well, yeah, just to confirm that, and it's outside the description of our, the draft ordinance, go ahead.
Well, I would just make an assumption that there's probably many cities throughout California that allow ADUs to be short-term rentals, so I don't know why Sacramento is being singled out. Well, okay, so then, but the point is. I think the question is, what is, what does the state allow, and then what does the city want to allow?
Right.
And that's, and that's a legitimate, that's a legitimate discussion, right? We can say we, we do not support ADUs to be used as, as short-term rentals, and I'm not taking a position either way, I'm simply saying that, that is absolutely legit, and it would be within the scope, I guess the real important point for me is, it would be within our scope on this document, I think, is Mr. Morris, so we, we can add things, we can take a position on that, so, you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, and.
It's within our purview to, to, to.
Well, are you proposing, do you want staff to include that in the next draft?
No, I, I, no, not necessarily, I don't, and I, I think, 'cause that would really get to the, that, that would really be impinging on short, cheap, affordable, thank you, affordable housing availability, which I think we're trying to strike a balance between allowing somebody who lives in a home and has a room they wanna rent versus, you know, trying to find.
They've created the accessory dwelling unit.
Create affordable housing for other folks who are gonna be renting for a long, long time, long-term rentals, and I, I don't want, I, I didn't see owner occupied as impacting long-term rentals in a negative way, okay?
That's not, yeah.
You see, you follow what I'm saying? Whereas an ADU.
Actually, it's a different discussion that we're.
Whereas, no, whereas allowing an ADU to be used as short-term rental, I could see as negatively impacting the stock of.
Yeah, and I think that runs counter to the whole idea of the ADU to create.
Sure, so, and, and so that, that's a discussion we could have, and I would probably agree with you on that. My point is merely that it is within our purview when this comes back to us, that, that is something that we could, couldn't have a decision on if we needed to. Staff has said no in this draft, and I support the way it's written.
Yeah, I just hope people appreciate the idea that our frustration is, this is a subject that deserves a workshop by itself. We hope to see you again. It's been two hours, and we frankly just started. I'd like to know, for example, how many known illegal Airbnbs there are now in the City of Placerville, because if, for example, there's just ten, what we heard was one example, that's ten percent of a known example, and it's hard to believe that that's the only problem. Pierre gave a great presentation last week at the city council meeting on enforcement department and what they've been doing, and they've made great improvements and advances, and that's been ten years on things like signs, the sandwich signs, the banner signs, things like that, and still working on it, so this is gonna take some time, because you have to start defining how you're gonna enforce these fines of five thousand, fifteen hundred, who's gonna impose them, and what kind of appeal process are you gonna have? Does it get appealed to the staff, comes to the city council? There needs to be a specific appeal process in there. It looks like a lot of work. Thank you.
It does. Okay. I'm going to close this workshop on hosted short-term rentals. I appreciate everyone showing up and sharing their thoughts with us. I apologize for cutting your comments short, but I realize that, you know, you are in conflict with staff, and I actually, I think we might appreciate if you could submit that more in detail in writing so that it can be appropriately considered, but I appreciate you coming down here and, and sharing your thoughts with us, and staff certainly has enough to work with. At this time, I'd like to take a five-minute break, please, so it's, I'm looking at different clocks, it's seven fifty-seven, let's reconvene at eight oh five.
Eight oh six, we're going to reconvene the, well, we don't have, we need Kurt, oh, there's Kurt.
On my last piece of paper.
Mr. Friend, Mr. Smith, please return to the dais. We're going to reconvene soon as we get, here we go, we've got four. It's eight oh six, eight oh six, and we're coming back to order for the planning commission meeting. Wanna thank everyone again, and then also you project applicants, appreciate your patience listening to all that. Let's move on to our next item, which is ten point one. I've lost, I've lost my agenda, it has notes on it, but I do believe we're going to ten point one, and this is, is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ten point one, I'm looking for my agenda.
Yes, all right. Thank you very much. Ten point one, site plan review of Grateful Threads and Cedar and Twine. This is, Kristen Hunter is the planner, so I'm gonna turn it over to Kristen for her staff report.
Thank you. Planning commission approval is required for any project that would convert a commercial structure resulting in a change in occupancy as defined by the California Building Code. The subject project is a request for a change in occupancy within the A-frame building addressed two forty-one, two forty-three, and two forty-five Placerville Drive. Two forty-one and two forty-three Placerville Drive are now occupied by Grateful Threads and was previously occupied by an attorney's office, Brad Clark, Attorney at Law. Two forty-five Placerville Drive is currently occupied by Cedar and Twine and was previously occupied by the Golden Wellness Center. Both previous occupancies were B, or business, while the new retail businesses are classified as M, or mercantile. It should be noticed that staff received written comments on the staff report, which were distributed prior to tonight's meeting. Staff prepared a supplemental memorandum to address the received comments. Copies of both the comments and staff's memorandum can be found at the table at the rear of the meeting room. Additionally, staff is proposing to correct the file number by removing SPR twenty-four dash oh-two and making the file number eighty-two dash twelve dash R, as the project is a revision to a previously approved site plan. This information was missed at the time of the application's submittal, and this clarification is primarily for filing and future reference. Staff apologizes for any confusion. As the project is a revision, the previous conditions of approval for SPR eighty-two dash twelve should be pulled forward and included in attachment one, as recommended in staff's memorandum. The project site has a unique history and includes two parcels, one containing two commercial buildings addressed two forty-one to two forty-nine Placerville Drive, and the other containing a parking lot. Typically, the establishment of a parking lot as the sole use within the commercial zone requires approval under a conditional use permit. However, based on city records, a conditional use permit was never granted for the second APN. The parcel nearest to Placerville Drive originally contained a single-family dwelling, built in nineteen forty-eight and approximately seven hundred square feet, which was later converted under SPR eighty-two dash twelve from a residential use to a commercial use. It's now addressed two forty-nine, two forty-seven and two forty-nine Placerville Drive. City records show that following approval of SPR eighty-two dash twelve, building permits sixty-six oh eight and seventy-eight fifty-six completed the conversion and addition, and also included changes to the parking lot. The A-frame building was constructed in nineteen sixty-one. Retail sales and service uses, such as Grateful Threads and Cedar and Twine, are allowed by right within the commercial zone when fully enclosed within a building. Based on the floor area of two forty-one, two forty-three, and two forty-five Placerville Drive, the new uses require a total of seven parking spaces, while the other building, two forty-seven to two forty-nine Placerville Drive, require fourteen spaces. Between the two parcels, a total of forty-seven spaces are provided. As such, with the reciprocal parking agreement included as a recommended condition of approval, all required onsite parking will be provided. The retail uses do not strictly adhere to the conceptual land use for the parcel as identified in the preferred vision plan of the Placerville Drive Development and Improvement Plan. The plan seeks to intensify and introduce a new mix of uses to create more visitor attractions and patrons to the Placerville Drive area. However, strict adherence to the preferred vision plan, specifically limiting the project to professional offices, is too restrictive and takes away commercial uses permitted by right within the commercial zone district. This is especially true as the city has not amended its general plan and zoning ordinance to embrace the land use concepts identified in the plan. As the amendments have not occurred, the vision plan is conceptual and is to be used as a guide, but cannot supersede those uses otherwise allowed by right. Overall, it is the opinion of staff that the proposed retail use meets the overall goal to intensify land uses. Further, both Grateful Threads and Cedar and Twine are destination businesses that add to the uniqueness of the corridor. Of note, on page six of the staff report, staff incorrectly stated that the Placerville Drive Development and Improvement Plan had not been adopted by city council. The plan was adopted first in two thousand nine by a city council minute order, and then again in two thousand nineteen under resolution eighty-seven sixty-eight. As such, the last sentence under the section entitled "Placerville Drive Development Plan Consistency" should be removed. Lastly, staff included modifications to the recommended conditions of approval included in attachment one, in response to the written comments received. These modifications include the following. For condition number three, correct the APN, changing two six zero in the middle to three six zero. For condition number seven, add the following language to the end of the existing recommended condition, the parking is restricted to the parking spaces shown on the approved site plan. For condition number ten, remove the last sentence referencing an approved CUP and master sign plan, this was accidentally left in attachment one, and as previously mentioned, pull forward the conditions of approval for SPR eighty-two dash twelve, listing them below condition number eleven. Overall, the request is consistent with the general plan and zoning ordinance, as retail uses would expand commercial services along Placerville Drive and would not be detrimental to surrounding property. Further, the request is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to Secu guidelines section fifteen three oh three, in that the project includes the change in occupancy within an existing structure with minor alterations to the exterior of the building. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings in support of SPR eighty-two dash twelve dash R, and conditionally approve SPR eighty-two dash twelve dash R located at two forty-one, two forty-three, and two forty-five Placerville Drive, based on the project information and findings included in the staff report, the additional analysis included in staff's memorandum, and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in attachment one of staff's report, and as modified in staff's memorandum. This concludes staff's report.
I didn't want to interrupt once you started, but.
I've got property a block away, so I get to take a break.
Oh, so you're going to recuse yourself because of the, okay, the conflict, okay.
The policy I've had.
We'll see you shortly. We'll send someone out, you'll be in the parking lot, you said?
Yes.
Okay, we'll send someone to get you.
Has anyone seen a commissioner watering?
Thank you, Ms. Hunter, for your staff report, and I'm glad we were able to catch those necessary changes describing the, particularly the development plan, and then clarifying the parking and the sign, the signage on the property. My question for staff is, if there are no other changes after our deliberation, would it be expedient just to attach your memo as part of the staff record, or is that already incorporated by reference? What's the best process to, you know, incorporate those changes?
Incorporate it.
So just to state that there was a memo and we would, if there's no further changes, incorporate those changes? Okay. That is the only question I have for you this time. Other commissioners have questions about the staff report?
Well, just looking at Mr. Painter's question, when, what is then the status of the SPR eighty-two twelve if, should we adopt the site plan twenty-four dash oh-two? Does it incorporate it? It's, they're kinda married, melded together, it's just, it's the same thing with whatever additional conditions we add, yeah?
Yeah, so that's why we're recommending to modify the file number, so.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So the conditions, it will just tie everything together.
Okay, and we, we've been doing that over the last couple of years as these things kinda pop up, makes record-keeping a lot easier. Okay, yeah, good, thank you.
No more questions? Okay. We would like, if the project applicant is in the audience, if you'd like to step up and add anything to. Hi.
No, I thought about converting it to a Airbnb.
So get the hook.
I see a lot of rooms in here, so.
And you're, Ms. Kilty?
I am.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for coming down here.
Sorry to introduce myself.
Anything you'd like to add about or address?
Not really, actually, there's been no, no structural changes whatsoever, just took the desks out and put the clothes racks in, and everything's the same as it has been for years.
Okay, and I appreciate you sending a summary letter for our review, talking about the business. Do any of the commissioners have questions of our applicant?
No, and don't feel compelled to say anything.
I just appreciate that you came down here and.
Absolutely.
We always like to have the applicants available if we do have questions.
Been an interesting evening.
Let's just sit down and.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the audience and public have a comment about this particular project? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for discussion and possible action. This is very straightforward, I agree with the conclusion in the staff report that this is, you know, a minor, not a minor, but it's a change in the, the use of the structure, but one that's, fits in well with the rest of Placerville Drive. I do have a question. Suppose another attorney wanted to come back and, you know, bought the, they could just file another application with the city and turn it back into an office, right? This doesn't.
It would be under a building permit, change in occupancy, and that instance, reverting it back to a B occupancy is actually exempt from site plan review as it's a less intensive.
It's a, it's a conditional use permit that, that runs with the land, but in. It's a conditional use permit that runs with the land, but in the future, if someone wanted to convert that to another use, they certainly could.
It's a site plan review, not a conditional use.
Oh, site plan review. I'm sorry. Not conditional use, site plan review, change in occupancy. Okay, and, okay. Any other...
I just had one...
Chair Keeney, if I can just, the reason why we bring these site plan reviews to you is so, you know, mainly in this case, we're looking at parking. Is a more intensive use causing more impacts or activity on the property such that maybe they're shy on parking, maybe they're coming in with new signage, those kinds of things? So you're not looking at the use at all, really. You're looking at the site plan.
Looking at the use of the site.
And the use of the site.
Okay, and, okay, so then to that point, the analysis shows that there is sufficient parking as long as, let's see, conditional approval number three is met, so we have that reciprocal parking agreement. Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
I just have one thing. When I was reading the staff report on page five, the third, or second paragraph, I guess, it says it will aid in maintaining the commercial center of downtown Main Street.
Oops.
I just wanted to, I thought, I wasn't sure if you were referencing like the whole area or Placerville.
It should be Placerville.
That's fine, yeah. So that was my only like observation in there. Otherwise, I think everything looks good, and unless you guys want to discuss it more, I'd be open to making a motion.
I would welcome that.
Okay, well, well, I mean, I think, I think I captured all of the stuff I'm supposed to, so you can follow me there.
You know...
Okay, so, sorry, let me get to... There it is. Okay, we'll make a motion to adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the following findings in support of SPR 24-02, which is the correct, yeah.
Eighty-two dash...
Okay, so we are changing, okay, so I put that on here. So to change the number to site plan review eighty-two dash twelve dash R, correct? Okay, good, I just want to make sure I hit that right. Okay, so make the following findings in support of SPR eighty-two dash twelve dash R as listed in items number one through four on the staff report, page six, and three to conditionally approve SPR eighty-two dash twelve dash R located at 241, 243, 245, 247, and 249 Placerville Drive, based on the project information and findings in the staff report, subject to the recommendation, the recommended conditions of approval included in Attachment 1 of the staff report dated May 21, 2024, with the updates to add the R after eighty-two dash twelve on number two, to correct the APN number to read two-three-two dash three-six-zero dash zero-zero-two, I believe was Mr. Hunter's correction. Am I correct there? And to add on number seven, that the parking shall be restricted to parking spaces shown on the approved site plan, to remove the sentence in number 10 regarding a master sign plan in the approved conditional use permit sentence, and incorporate the conditions of approval on page four of the staff memo dated 5/21/24. Did I hit that? Did I mess that up?
I think that's right. Am I missing in our findings the SEQA determination? I'm not seeing it on the...
Point of order, we probably should have a second before we have any other discussions.
I apologize, yeah.
Actually, yes, the finding was not added, so if you could please add that. Apologies.
Okay, and then, so then I will also add a recommendation as part of my plan to find that this project is exempt from SEQA. Did I hit all the changes I was supposed to make otherwise?
Yes.
I'll second the motion, just so we can have discussion.
Sorry about that.
And then, I'd like to make a friendly amendment, if I could. I'd like to add finding number five, if that's the correct number, that the businesses as proposed are consistent with the Placerville Drive Development and Implementation Plan, otherwise known as the plan. And that will be...
So remove the not, yeah, okay, that it is consistent.
It is consistent.
Okay, I will accept the amendment.
Chair, if I may, it's not necessarily what I would say consistent, so what I'm going to do is, I'm going to read some language that we included in, and I'm going to be referencing, the memorandum dating May the 21st, where we received that comment from Mr. Painter about this plan. So, so it says, and I'm quoting from the plan, "The purpose of the preferred vision plan is to provide a community-based document to revitalize the corridor and is closely related to and reflects the SA-COG's blueprint principles. The plan proposes an intensification and mix of land uses in order to attract more business and patrons to the area by providing a greater opportunities for retail shops, restaurants, professional offices, services, mixed uses, residential uses, and lodging." Okay, this is, and this is the key part. Phase one of the phasing plan of actions recommended that the city, and this is out of the plan, recommended that the city amend its general plan and zoning ordinance to embrace the land use concepts contained in the study, the plan. This action has not yet occurred. Therefore, the use of the vision poster, which is the map that's shown in the staff report, is conceptual to be used as a guide but cannot supersede those uses that are otherwise allowed by right in the commercial zoning district. So you have a use then, a retail use that's allowed by right in the commercial zone, consistent with the city of Placerville general plan. However, it's not, I wouldn't want you to say it is consistent with the vision poster, which designates that entire strip there as being strictly a commercial office, professional office. But if you look at the existing land use, there's restaurants there, services there. Right. There's all kinds of mixed use in that corridor. So that's, to me, that's something where we would, if we were to move forward with this vision plan, we would probably revisit that particular area on the map. So I think you could, you could make, you can make the statement that we were stating, that I stated in the above paragraph, that it's sort of meeting the overall goal of that plan, of what the plan was trying to achieve for that corridor. However, it is inconsistent with that vision map. Does that make sense? I hope I didn't confuse you. But... I was trying to, I was trying to make... But I wouldn't... It just seems to me that... This plan was never formally adopted. Yeah, sorry. Or it was formally adopted, however, it wasn't implemented. So, right, but if the overall goal as stated on the staff report is to intensify and introduce a new mix of uses in order to create a more visitor, more visitor attractions and patrons to the Placerville Drive area, certainly the store that they have created, what they're, what they're offering, that seems to me to do exactly that. It's bringing a different, new clientele into the area, which can then, you know, patronize the food and drink establishments that are in the area, et cetera, et cetera. So to me, it did seem to be consistent with this, as stated in the staff report.
I think justifying that it's the, it's consistent or it meets the plan goal to intensify.
Yeah, okay, that's good enough. I'll find that it meets the planning goal to intensify. Thank you. All right, that's, that was, that was my friendly amendment.
So...
I'm lost.
I need the maker of the motion to have to accept that.
So I think, if I understand what your point, Mr. Friend is, so change, change the wording number four, just kind of strike what we have and add that the project meets the overall goal of the Placerville Drive Development and Implementation Plan to intensify the use?
I would say, we don't need number five. So I'm going to revise my friendly amendment. We don't need number five. I would simply want to add on number four, Ms. Hunter's language, that these uses do meet, do meet the goal, do support the goal of intensifying and introducing a new mix of uses in order to be...
Right.
The language that's there on page five. So just add that, that it does meet that into that condition number four. That would be my finding.
But it is, yeah, number five, since we had to add...
Okay.
That the project's exempt, so...
Yeah, five is the project exempt. My language would simply be going, I would add it to number four, just to put a finer point on it. Does the motion accept that as a friendly amendment?
I do, yes.
You're going to fall asleep on this.
No, I'm trying not to.
Chair Keeney?
Yes.
I would say you refer to page three of the memorandum, that first paragraph under the vision poster. All you have to do is make a finding that it meets the plan goal, and it's quoted, "to intensify and introduce a new mix of uses in order to create more visitor attractions."
Which page are you on?
He's on the, he's on page, he's on this page here.
Oh, on the memo.
Yeah, but the same language appears in the original staff report, which is what I was quoting on page five, so they're the same.
So just directly quote from the plan? Okay.
Yeah, that language, it's in italics, I think.
Okay, I understand.
I follow now. Thank you.
This must drive people crazy. It's got to. Okay.
So is my, are you clear that my motion is?
My, I wanted to get a clarification.
You got it.
Should we also incorporate the memo dated 5/21/24?
I thought I referenced...
So adopt the staff report and the memo?
I thought that I referenced incorporating the conditions of approval in the memo, and the memo of dated 5/21/24.
Right, so I just want to make sure that number one reads that we are adopting that memo as well.
Yes, to be clear, I'm adopting both.
Okay.
That's my intention.
Okay.
Cool.
I think we have a conference. So we have a motion to second any further. Mr. Rebus, please call the roll, or the vote?
We want a roll call, this.
Roll call or vote?
Vice Chair Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Friend?
Aye.
Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith? Oh, we have to go get him.
Okay. Okay, so the pass is 4-0 and of approval. There is a 10-day appeal process, but, so other than that, thank you very much for your time and good luck with your business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, in a moment, we'll move on to item 10.2 as soon as we get Commissioner Smith Welcome back. We will now take up item 10.2. This is a site plan review, historic review for 3160 Cedar Ravine Road, APN 003251013. Consideration of a site plan review application within the 6,000 single-family residential historic district zone to modify an existing single-family residence, one to remove the garage door and install a wall in its place, install two vinyl windows, and find the project categorically exempt from SEQA for section 15301. And I will turn this over again to Ms. Hunter for her staff report.
Thank you. So Planning Commission approval is required for projects located within any of the cities for historic districts, where the project includes modifications to the exterior architecture of the building as visible from the right-of-way. SPR 24-03 includes the removal of a garage door, framing of the door area, addition of two vinyl windows, and the addition of vinyl siding and trim to match the rest of the building. The dwelling is located within the Cedar Ravine Historic District, but is not included on a local, state, or federal listing for historic structures. Furthermore, the dwelling has been heavily modified since its construction in 1947, removing a majority of historically significant exterior features. The wall constructed following the removal of the garage door was overlaid with vinyl siding matching the remainder of the building. The vinyl siding for the dwelling was approved in 1992 under Building Permit 9634. The vinyl windows included in the project were added to the elevation and did not replace previously existing windows. As detailed in the staff report, the modifications to the structure were completed without permits in 2002, and the Development Services Department generated a code case in 2017 when staff became aware of the violation. Staff considered the decision of city council on October 20, 2023, and the general consensus of the council regarding the use of vinyl windows within the historic district. At this meeting, it was stated that vinyl windows are an acceptable alternative as a modern product for properties not included on the historic inventory or register of historic places. Overall, it is the opinion of staff that the modifications did not remove distinctive historical features or alter the property with respect to special or spatial relationships, did not add conjectural features, and did not change the overall scale and proportion of the dwelling. It is the opinion of staff that the project is consistent with the zoning ordinance sections 10-4-9, Site Plan Review, and Section 10-4-10, Historic Buildings in the City, with Goal F, Policy 4 of the General Plan Housing Element, and Goal C, Policies 2 and 6 of the General Plan Community Design Element, and with the City of Placerville Development Guide. The request is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to SEQA Guideline Section 15301, as the project involves minor alterations to an existing structure that is not listed on a city, state, or federally, federal historic resources inventory, and that would not result in an expansion of the single-family residential use. As such, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings in support of SPR 24-03, and conditionally approve SPR 24-03 located at 3160 Cedar Ravine Road, based on the project information and findings included in the staff report, and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in Attachment 1 of the staff report. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much. Anyone have questions for Ms. Hunter at this point? Okay, thank you very much. Is the project applicant in the audience? And would you like to step up to the podium and share a little bit of the information or review this for us, whatever?
My name's Kim Johnston.
Hi.
And hi.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm just happy to get this taken care of. Yes.
Okay, so...
Have questions for me?
Any questions for the applicant?
No, not really.
Okay, I just want to, you know, be clear on the sequence of events. You had some intrusion, water intrusion and other things, and so you enclosed that to make some habitable space? And that was back in 2002?
Two.
2002.
Yes.
So that's when you...
It was basically like two plywood doors, more like a storage door, I would describe it, rather than a garage door.
And is there access from that space into the rest of the house, or was it just, like you said, a storage area?
It's a, it's a storage area, and there is access to the upstairs.
Okay, so it's connected to you.
And there's also an alternative door to that storage area.
Uh huh.
Yeah, it was kind of like rinkety plywood doors with about this much gap in the bottom, and yeah.
And rather than keep it as a garage, you decided to...
You can't even fit more than a Mini Cooper in there, so, in that opening, so, yeah, we just closed it up. An ex-boyfriend of mine did it.
And from the pictures, yeah, it looks, you did, I think, a reasonable job of fitting in with everything else that was there, so...
Definitely looks better than it did. In my opinion, it was a great improvement.
And so now you're going to do a hosted short-term rental, right?
No, I'm not a short-term rental.
At least, they laughed, okay?
I can make that an ADU, but I don't think it's going to be...
Okay, well, that's another discussion.
We have water issues in that area that we're still working on.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
You're right over the creek, aren't you? Creek runs right underneath.
Yeah, the creek's in front of my...
Oh, it's in front, because I lived a couple of houses up, and the creek was right underneath the floorboards during the late, the floods of the late 80s, remember that, Napa Valley and all that? Boy, and the creek was rushing. You could look up, or you could see the water right there, so...
Yeah.
I know water areas, water in those areas are difficult.
Yeah, well, I'm the, I'm the one that catches everybody else's water there, so, yeah. Well, that's another issue. So, thank you so much.
Yeah, I just have a quick question for you, if you don't mind, ma'am. I apologize. I just thought about this while we were having this conversation. I just thought about this while we were having this conversation. So you've been in the home since 2002, so you've been there for a couple of decades.
Yes.
And so are you aware of the historic district and the, and just not accusatory in any way? This is actually more of like a question that we've kind of been asking people that.
I was not for a long time until this, yeah, I had no idea.
So.
When was the historic district committee established?
So, and that's kind of the question I was going to ask you is that we're trying to figure out ways to better communicate with homeowners in historic districts, you know, how this, how this all works and, you know, why this was triggered. In the most part, was because you live in a historic district. Although your home is not considered historic, you do live in a historic district. And so I guess, I was just curious, you know, your awareness, how we could better help you understand your responsibilities as the owner of a historic home, if you're willing to just share a little bit with, some suggestion maybe.
Well, I'm aware now. I had, I really had no idea all these years I've been living here until we were dealing with.
When did you purchase the home?
2002.
So 2000, then immediately had the problem and, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so I, yeah, I had no idea at that time and up until now, I mean, since working with Pierre and so forth.
Okay, excellent. I appreciate the input.
Okay, thank you.
My question is, just to ask you, do you have photographs of the past, anything?
I do not. Sorry. I was hoping I did, but I do not. Of what it looked like prior?
It's a little late, but if you go to the History Museum, they have them by address, and sometimes you can find photographs that way.
Oh, okay. Anything else?
No, okay, great.
Oh, sorry.
So you're, thank you, again, thank you for coming down, answering our questions. We really appreciate you taking the time. And any comments from the other member of the audience on this item? Okay. I'm going to close the public comment portion of this hearing and bring it back to the commission for consideration.
I'll just, I'll just make the point that I did drive by the property, and I concur with staff's opinion that the modifications don't detract from the home. It all looks seamless, looks like it fits in, and I have no problem with approving the request.
I agree. Just from the photograph in the staff report, it seems to fit in well with the rest of the house, so.
Yeah, I would concur. I also did drive by the property, and I did appreciate that the windows that you did put in matched the other windows, even though they're different materials, they do look identical to the rest of the wooden windows at the front of the house, so I do appreciate that. So I would concur with my fellow commissioners on that. I'm prepared to make a motion if anybody else.
Please, go ahead.
I butchered that last word.
Well, you, it wasn't easy.
I tried.
All right. Well, I would make a motion that we adopt the staff report as part of the public record, that we make the following findings in support of SPR 24-03, that the request is exempt from CEQA Guideline Section 15301. The project site is 3160 Cedar Ravine Road. I would make a slight change to finding number three. I would change the Spring Street, Columbus Street Historic District to the Cedar Ravine Historic District. That the project is consistent with the General Plan Community Design Element Goal C, that is consistent with the purpose, intent, and criteria of zoning ordinance 1049 and 10410, and that the project request is consistent with the Development Guide, that we conditionally approve SPR 2403 located at 3160 Cedar Ravine Road based on the project information and findings included in the staff report, and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in Attachment 1 of the staff report dated May 21st, 2024.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this, the motion or the, okay, great. Can we please have the roll call vote?
Vice Chair Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Friend?
Aye.
Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
So that's 5-0 approval. Thank you very much. Again, there's a, there is a 10-day appeal period, but we want to thank you for taking care of that home and making it look very nice down in our historic district. And, you know, you got a little history lesson, I guess, but we appreciate that. Okay, now, moving on to item 10.3. Item 10.3. This is a site plan review revision SPR 78-11-R3 as regards 20, 1216 to 1252 Broadway. The site plan review revision application within a highway commercial zone to add awnings above the west elevation windows of 1216 Broadway, Shorty's, Gelato, and Bakery within the existing Hangtown Village Square Shopping Center, and to find the project categorically exempt from CEQA under 15301. And I turn it over to Kristen Hunter for her staff report.
Triple crown, right? The request is a revision to the approved site plan review for the Hangtown Village Square Shopping Center and includes the addition of two green canvas awnings above the windows of Shorty's, Gelato, and Bakery located at 1216 Broadway. The awnings would reduce sun exposure to the west elevation to aid in temperature control and reduce impacts to the baked goods sold on-site. Overall, in staff's opinions, while the awnings are a major change from the previous approval, the project is consistent with the community design element of the general plan as well as zoning ordinance section 10-4-9 Site Plan Review and the City of Placerville Development Guide in that the materials and color are compatible with previously approved elements, and the overall scale and proportion of the building remain the same. The request is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to CEQA Guideline Section 15301 and that the project includes the minor alteration of an existing private structure that shall result in no expansion of the existing use. As such, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings in support of SPR 78-11-R3, and conditionally approve SPR 78-11-R3 located at 1216 to 1252 Broadway based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in Attachment 1 of the staff report. This concludes staff's report on SPR 78-11-R3.
Thank you very much. Very straightforward, but do any commissioners have questions for staff at this time? Mr. Smith, you have your light on?
By accident. I have no.
No questions? Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Do we have the project representative present? And would you like to, is there anything you'd like to add to the request, or does anybody have a question for?
Do you have any questions on the project?
I had one question, because I went by there. Now, the, the two businesses to the east of you, the Teriyaki Junction, and I can't remember what the name of the other one is, but they have a number of umbrellas out front, I think, of theirs. Your awnings and the umbrellas are going to be, they won't conflict with each other, right?
No, not at all.
Okay, yeah, good, no problem.
Any other questions?
I'm glad to hear there's donuts nearby. I've got to get in there.
Yeah, it's a bakery.
Well, I want to.
His microphone's not on, by the way.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, again, want to thank you coming down, answering questions, and also thank you for a very clear presentation to us. All the pictures tell the story, made it really obvious, you know, what is you want to do and how it fits in with the rest of the building. So thank you for the, all that effort, too. Okay. Please have a seat, and are there any members of, was there anything else you wanted to add? I'm sorry.
No, not at all.
Okay. I don't think we have any more questions for you. Thank you. Any comments on the project? Okay. I will close the public comment portion and bring it back to the commission for possible action. Like I said, it's very straightforward. I think it's going to be a real benefit to those businesses, so I'm in favor of it.
I'm happy to move approval.
And I'd entertain a motion to, on the project?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and move approval for site plan review, the revision to the site plan SPR 78-11-R3. And in, including the staff report is presented May 21st, 2024. Adopting it as part of the public record and adopting the findings, or make the findings in support of SPR as indicated on pages four and five of the staff report, and conditionally approve SPR 78-11-R3 located at 1216-1252 Broadway based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in Attachment 1 as part of the staff report.
We have a motion, and can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lepper.
I didn't feel the need to enumerate all of the.
Oh, please. Thank you for just alluding to them. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, vote, please.
Vice Chair Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Friend?
Aye.
Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Okay. Unanimous approval. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Good luck with the installation on your project. Thank you for the benefit of, all right, moving right along.
Oh, I guess we're on continued.
Move on to number 11, continued items, of which we have no continued items. Okay, great. And that takes us to new business 12.1. This is the proposed letter to City Council from Planning Commission Special Committee to the Planning Commission on Historic Resources, letter prepared by Commissioner Friend. So this is Mr. Friend's submittal, so I'll just turn it over to you for a brief description, and then I'll come back to staff if you have any comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is that, or not exactly, this isn't a public hearing, should I allow staff to, I'm sorry, staff to go first?
This can certainly be open for public comment.
This is agendized, I would think. Anything on the agenda can be, yeah.
So basically, my understanding is you had your special subcommittee on historic resources, and then Mr. Friend developed this letter on behalf of that special committee to be submitted to the city council for consideration of priorities. So this letter is to be scrutinized by the Planning Commission so that it's a unanimous vote to approve it and move it forward to the city council.
So if I, so if I could jump in and motivation and all that, and start with an apology for the very first, the letter was included with the packet, because that was written on my phone at my father's bedside, and I didn't have all of the information, particularly the names and correct spellings of names when I first wrote it. So the letter that was handed out this evening is the exact same text, except for I misspelled my name, I noticed, the very end. But, but, so I apologize for that. But basically, first of all, the work of the special committee, I think the commission is in agreement, was very, very important, and, and it was very good work. And that we also have a lot of work ahead of us in the future. And I think it was important to advise the city council that the commission, particularly with the urging and the enlightenment provided by Commissioners Carter and Smith on the commission's responsibilities, we are, we are doing something. We're, we are being proactive with regards to our historic resources, maintenance and preservation. And so I just thought it would be important to let them know what we did and what we're doing, and then also to, again, thank the chair for supporting it, because as chair, she could have a decision to disband the committee. And I think from our last meeting, she also supports what the committee, what we're planning to do. And I'm interested in helping out any way that I can, so. Anyway, that's really the focus of the letter. It's, I think it's informative for the council.
Thank you. And before we go with any discussion from the commission, any public comment? I'd like to take that before we go further. I just wanted an explanation from staff and also from Mr. Friend. Good evening.
There's an advantage to having a rider wait three hours to make his comments because of by two-thirds.
I appreciate you for sharing your stamina with us and sticking with it.
We okay? I'm Weston DeWalt, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about this item. In the proposed memo to City Council, it said that the Planning Commission disbanded the special committee after receiving its summary report on April 2nd. And then it goes on to say that at the April 16th meeting, the commission was, quote, "in agreement that the work initiated by the special committee should continue," close quote. And then it charts a course going forward for that special committee and the commission. Because I was unable to attend the April 16th meeting of the commission, I found myself wondering how the commission reached its agreement to have the special committee's work continue, and how it decided upon the composition, responsibilities, and assignments of that committee as it goes forward. To answer those questions for myself, and to consider whether the proposed memo, in its focus and wording, meaningfully addressed all the issues and concerns expressed by the council during its April meeting, I went to the commission's video archive and found that there were audio problems in the recording of the April 16th meeting, and therefore, no video of the meeting to consult. Turning to the minutes of the April 16th meeting, I found them greatly lacking in detail about how the decisions were reached. Given this, and in the interest, and in the public's interest, I ask that the commission consider sending the council a more robust memo. And in the interest of promoting leadership to leadership communications, I ask that any resulting revised memo be sent to the city council over the, over the signature of the current chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. You hit upon a few concerns I had about the memo myself. So let's go ahead and embark. I want to thank you, Mr. Friend, for your work on this and for refining the memo, which is, was just submitted, but it's now part of the public record. There is a new draft. I don't know, Mr. DeWalt, if you saw the revised memo. But I agree with you that perhaps a more lengthy memo to the city council would be warranted. The other, a couple of other things that occurred to me is that this, I think it would be better if we provided a memo to the city council when we have the reviewed plan to present at the same time. City council is well, no doubt, well aware of the work that's, that's being done. I'm sure they review the videos or read the minutes, and so they know that this work is ongoing. And so while I appreciate, you know, your enthusiasm to report to them that we are making good progress, we are on the brink, as I understand. When we last spoke on the 16th, that you thought you might have another draft in, for our second meeting in June? Is that still your, a reasonable target?
Well, it's not on the calendar. I can give you a brief.
Well, I just want to, could we get to that in a minute? I want to talk about the memo right now, but just so that I understand your progress. So we're on the brink of having the review ready to, actually, for us to review and then send along to the city council. And at that point, I think a summary letter, not unlike what you've given to us, would be appropriate. To, also to something that Mr. DeWalt mentioned, are all the concerns addressed? You know, that, a good point, and that would be something for, I think, the city council to refer back to us. One thing I want to make sure that we convey when we. One thing I want to make sure that we convey when we do have a cover letter for the report is to limit the scope of this special commission. When I read your first draft, Mr. Friend, it was, I found a couple of kind of signal words, and I'm glad you changed one. In the first paragraph, you said that, as chair of the commission last year, I found their assessment. But then you go on to say made the following findings. That's, that is a very specific term, term of art, if you will, findings. And I think we would be better served just to say, I'm not disagreeing with what you list, one through four, but these are, these are things that we discovered as opposed to making findings. And then on the second, actually toward the end, I think that we should not further define the special committee's tasks. What the minutes show from our last meeting is simply that we're going to continue the special committee to finalize the draft report presented to the commission. So they're going to finalize it, we're going to review it, and that's what we're going to send on to City Council. And I really think we would be in a better position at that point to close that special commission. And at that point, we can point, we can inform the City Council that we have at least four other areas of information that need to be researched. And so then we would have to reform, reconstitute the special committee. My concern about this is the Brown Act. And, you know, we started this, I think, talking about a standing committee. And we don't want to get into a Brown Act violation of a committee that's open-ended. And I think we would be on better ground if we just finalized point one, which is finalize the draft report, and then our special committee's job is concluded. And then at another point in time, we form the special committee again to take on whatever priority the commission wants to take on, whether it's numbers two, three, four, or five listed there in your memo. But we need to deliberate and then choose maybe one or two of those topics that the next special committee could take on. I don't want to give the impression that we have, in effect, we're calling it an ad hoc committee, but it's in effect a standing committee.
No, it's actually not. I really need to bring some correction to all of this. And respectfully to the speaker, the reason the memo was prepared this way through the chair is because I was actually the chair at the time that the first committee was created and I was the chair the second time that the committee, the current committee, was created. So when the first committee brought forth the report, that concluded their original charge. And then the commission found the value enough to create, establish a special committee, which, and this is all in accordance with the bylaws. And you would have to go back and look at the agenda packets in which the materials were provided specifically to this item. And you will recall that I had initially proposed a standing committee.
Right.
But then that does, in fact, raise concerns with Brown Act procedures. And it was way too complicated. And there was no reason to do that because we could accomplish the objectives, which is what? What is the objective? The objective is for the Planning Commission to execute the duties and responsibilities delegated or assigned to it by City Council. The purpose of this memorandum is to demonstrate to the City Council that we are doing just that. And here are the efforts that we did. We established a standing committee, which, by the way, initially, not all the commissioners were in favor of, but through the work of that committee, everyone said, this is really good, this is important, this will really kind of get us to where we need to go and we can kind of develop a roadmap. And we did agree that we wouldn't take on everything all at once. Maybe we'll start with these priorities. And these were some of the priorities that came directly from the draft memo, report that the special committee created. With regards to the term in the letter, made the following findings, I could have put that in quotes because that's exactly what I said as I was anticipating doing a standing committee. So that's 100% accurate and factual, although if we want to change that, we certainly could. I mean, I'm not beholden to that. I was simply trying to be as accurate with regards to what actually happened in the meeting as possible. I'm a big believer that perfect is the evil of good, okay? And so I'm just interested in providing information of the City Council, number one. Number two, it does not have to have my name on it anywhere. It can certainly just come from the chair. That's not the objective, right? The primary objective is to inform council, one, that we're doing it. And the special committee, we agreed at the last meeting that we would discuss amongst ourselves what priorities should happen. And I think the first priority we agreed with was to refine the report, the draft that was given to us, to finalize it, and then that's something that then could be forwarded to council. But to let council know what we're doing something now, I think is absolutely appropriate.
I had to go backwards in a sense. It was Commissioner Carter who pointed out that last month, Mayor Noe said that it appeared that the Planning Commission was struggling with its objectives or something to that And he conceded that's correct. So what happened at the last meeting was consensus. Because instead of being divided about having a committee, you had consensus of five who said, yes, it's of value. And now, if I may, jump to the next part and give you a quick report. Because frankly, what's involved is you've got two new people and there's always going to be concerns about where are they headed? And the answer is, you got it. You're not going to get a revised report because you've got four areas, several areas, that were mandated a number of years ago. And it doesn't matter why nothing has been done in the past. The fact is, the five of us agree we're going to focus on it. And the first one we were going to suggest to you is the Interior Secretary's standards. Because when those were first passed, they were described as just a start, they needed to be tweaked. They're designed for federal historic properties like Mount Vernon. They were not meant for Placerville. And there are obviously different objectives that we have for public policy now, like fire prevention, so using fire retardant materials if it's historically consistent in appearance, or different kinds of storm windows for energy efficiency. Frankly, we're stuck because that's not the Interior Secretary's standards. So our proposal was to come back and suggest an outline of some of the issues we would suggest for the first, for the first workshop. And it would be just a suggestion. You can, and we expect you, all of you, all five of us, to add to it. It's not our product, it's your product, the five of you. So you decide what are the things that we need to know to be able to recommend to the city, hey, this is the way you might want to change the current standards so that they're livable, workable, and achieve what they were designed to do. So you're not going to get, I know that's the way the then-chair described it, as a new report. But frankly, we felt that what we gave you before outlines several areas that were listed in the resolution that the City Council came up with long ago. So I was excited tonight by the participation. And that's exactly what I would hope for, for the future. I had a conversation with the mayor yesterday, just casual, and one of the discussions was about the way she operated when she was chair of the Recreation and Parks. And she said that she engaged in a dialogue with people from the public, and it wasn't limited to three minutes. And as a mayor, she did that not long ago when, for example, Ruth Mickelson was speaking and her expertise operating an art gallery, and she said, please, go ahead. So we were stuck tonight on that other matter for a workshop because we had all these things put together and they were crammed in because staff had a deadline of coming back in 90 days and so on. But with a workshop, we want to hear from people, we want to hear their expertise.
If I could, redirect it back. So the special committee, just to clarify, in the minutes, it does say, I'll read it directly from the minutes, "Following discussion, Chair Friend proposed to create a special committee with a task of refining and finalizing the memorandum provided to the commission on April 2nd, 2024, to be brought back to the Planning Commission for the June 18th, 2024 meeting, subject to staff's availability."
Thank you for that.
That's one of the items, yes, that's true. So...
How would you really...
My hope was...
Is that inconsistent with what I just said?
No, no, but I think, actually, I think what you're, I agree with everything that you're saying, Kirk, except I would actually put it under the next agenda item, you know, what the special, what's the special committee doing, kind of separate from the memorandum itself. But yes, one of the things, what I, at the time, what I wanted to see, and I would provide some help, word smithing if you needed, I just wanted to see a more refined report from the draft that you gave that could then be sent on to council, I think similar to what kind of the chair is saying. But in the meantime, again, I'm going to go back to the language here on the front of the memo because this was in your report. It said, in the report, the special committee observes that, "Since those duties from the Historic Advisory Committee were delegated to the commission nearly nine years ago, we are not aware of the Planning Commission having engaged in a systematic examination of the city's historic preservation requirements." That struck me. That was, that was really profound to me, not just as a chair, but as a commissioner for all these years, that, wow, that just hit me, like a ton of historic bricks. You're right. And so I really felt the desire to let the city know, hey, this has been brought to our attention and thank you to Commissioner Carter and Commissioner Smith for really jumping up and saying, we got to, we got to do this. I remember when, when you brought this item up, Ryan, originally, that was, became the genesis for the formation of the first special committee that sunsetted because it concluded its work, right? That, wow, okay, he brought that energy and this was the conclusion. I think the council needs to know this. That's why, that's what compelled me to write this. And I think, I think it's factual in terms of what happened. I think it's factual in terms of what we agreed on. And I think it's factual in terms of what the focus is. So that's kind of where I'm at with it.
My concern is not that it's not factual, but that it's ahead of where we want to be. We want to, I think it would have more effect to have this appended to the finalized report and then state the genesis of, you know, how Commissioner Carter and Smith took this on. And I think, as you rightly pointed out, these duties that were transferred to the Planning Commission, I think that's very powerful language to get the attention of the City Council. And then to go on in our cover letter, that essentially would be what you've drafted here, outline how we have agreed that there is more work to do. So that is, that is my preference on this memo, is to slightly modify it, but have it as the cover to our report, that we're going to see the final draft of shortly.
Would this help if we come back at the next meeting? And just to give you a heads up, what we will give you, since I'm often faulted for being too ruddy, we're going to keep it pretty much the way we've done. We've outlined areas and our interest was avoiding two people speaking for five. All we've done is outline areas of importance that were originally given to us, the commission. And of all of them, just think about which one, let's just talk about it for, informally for a few moments. Of all those, what is the most pressing? Well, one of them had to do with having Main Street become an historic district. Yeah, that's an important thing to look at, but no one's going to...
Could you just hold that thought for a moment? I want to resolve the memo discussion and then let's move on.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair.
I guess what I'm leading up to, to make everybody feel comfortable, I don't mind tabling this the next time, because I'm just outlining that the analysis you'll get is that of all the subjects, the most pressing that we face, meeting after meeting virtually, is the standards.
I agree, and I think that that could be, that could be emphasized in our cover letter.
And we're not, the two of us are not going to tell all five, it's a joint project.
I'd like to make a motion.
Hash out at the next meeting is where we were headed.
Okay.
I'd like to move that this memorandum be moved to an association with the revised draft report prepared by the original special committee in such a manner that'll be suitable for submittal to council.
I'll second that.
Okay, sorry. I would never know when I can talk yet before there's a second. So I'm like, can I talk?
Chair Keeney, could staff provide some comments?
Sure.
And this is from staff's perspective. We read that, we read the minutes into the record, so you know exactly what, what the action was supposed to be. The special committee was supposed to come back with a finalized plan. And Commissioner Smith kept saying, not the two acting on behalf of the five. That's not the way I think staff sees it. We see it as that special committee was created to do a lot of background work, to provide recommendations to the full commission, with the commission's consideration. And then the commission deliberates, preparing a cover memo to submit whatever you distill from the work that was done by the special committee to submit to the council as far as priorities. And then you would, you would vote, you would word smith that cover letter or what have you, based on the final report provided by the special committee. And you vote on it and then you direct the chair to sign the memo on behalf of the full commission, go to the council.
Right. That was my point in saying that this is a bit premature. We haven't had a chance to review the final product and establish our, establish priorities. So...
Except as the author of the memo, that wasn't the intent, right? When I wrote this, this was not written in relation to that report. This was written purely to provide education, information to the council as to what the commission suddenly recognized, it had, it's got these duties it's got to deal with and here's, here's what we're going to do in that effort, in that endeavor. So I never intended this to be related to that report. When that report, when the special committee brings something for the commission to review and approve, then that report could then certainly be sent on to council as well. And I don't think there's any problem with over-communicating to council what our efforts are in regards to this area. It just kind of seems we're conflating the two. The purpose of my motion is to try to make it simple and if there's, you know, discomfort with, with doing something like this, which personally, I don't see any harm, it, the council might go, oh, wow, I'm kind of excited to see something's happening. And then when the next thing comes in, they go, okay, good. And then the next thing, and then, and I want to get to Commissioner Lepper's suggestion from those, you weren't able to make the meeting, I believe, but you sent in, in writing, you sent comments, right? And there were some really cool ones, like one, let's get some signs that tell people you're entering a historic district, right? That really, I would have brought up under the next agenda item for tonight. But that's, that's kind of what I was thinking about. So this memo was never intended to be anything other than informative to the council that over the past year, the commission realized, again, through, through being pushed or the, whatever, great efforts by Commissioners Carter and Smith, that, hey, we really, we do have these responses, we do it, so we're going to start doing some things. And here, here's what we, we did agree, this is, this is what we discussed and agreed that we... that we, that the new special committee, the one that exists right now, these would be some of the things that the committee would work on. Because Commissioner Keeney, rightfully, when the first committee was set up, was concerned about its scope. And then I tried to be very specific, in fact, she requested me to be specific in, in coming up with something for the committee, the standing committee, right? Because we didn't approve the standing committee. I said, well, I'll come back with a proposal for the standing committee, including specificity in terms of what I would want that committee to do. And that evolved back to a special committee due to Brown Act considerations. But nonetheless, the, the special committee, which we have, here's what we agreed, let's focus on these, okay? We discussed and agreed on that.
I don't think you're understanding my concern. Yes, these are things that a special committee should consider at some point, but the implication in the letter is drafted is that the committee is going to move forward with all of these. And we agreed and we understood that a standing committee was not appropriate. A special committee is an ad hoc committee that is temporary in nature. And this is an exhaustive list. And so that's, that's my concern in the letter, is to, that it implies that the special committee is going to take on all of this work, and I don't think that that's accurate. We also talked about other people sharing this workload, and I thought that we agreed that special committees would, of necessity, come and go, especially under the law, since they are to be temporary in nature.
Well, I don't know what law you're citing.
The Brown Act.
No, this is not subject to Brown Act. It is a special committee, not subject to the Brown, a standing, I'm sorry.
Committees.
Madam Chair. A standing, a standing committee is subject to the Brown Act. The special committee is subject to the Brown Act to the extent that it is attached to the regular meetings of the planning commission. Therefore, all Brown Act issues are met by the agenda being posed and the materials being available. We meet the Brown Act requirements here and now. A standing committee, however, has separate Brown Act requirements, has to have its own separate minutes, has to have its own separate agenda. And we agreed that that was way too much work for staff, that I didn't want to have. I was not looking for something anywhere near that complicated. Then back to the other issues.
Actually, we just disagree on the definition, and I think the only resolution is, you know, I hate to burden the staff or city finances, but I think we need clarification. Mr. Moore, may I have the experiment?
Well, no, a couple of comments I'd like to make.
Okay, but obviously, we don't agree on the definitions of ad hoc and standing committees. So please go ahead.
I don't think, I don't think we need to go into that tonight. I mean, I think we know where, where you're at and what you've done. I think, and I haven't been part of all of these discussions, as you know. I was there for one of your meetings when you discussed this. I think, to try to bring this to conclusion, I think you're both kind of saying the same thing. Mr. Friend offered at one point, I know you said, let's combine that with the report.
Yeah.
I think the important thing that I would like.
That's actually the motion on the table.
Correct. As, as someone who reports and works closely with the city council, I like the idea of combining the two together. Make this a cover letter to the report, refine the report, which was what was directed in your planning commission minutes. And the only thing, reason I say, I want to let you know that the council is well aware, excuse me, of the, the appointed ad hoc committee and the work that they've been doing. That's been brought to their attention. They're well aware of that. So I don't think it's completely necessary that you divide the two things to say that, to show that they have been doing so. They're, they're aware that what you've been doing and what has been going on. So simply refining, if you're going to do that, sounds like that was the direction, to refine that report, bring that back. It might be close, and not a lot needs to be done. There's a specific date, June 18th, that says you'll bring that back. Bring that back. You know, I would, I would suggest that the, the chair can, or the chair can direct someone else to prepare, refine this letter to go with that, saying this is where we're at. And I think that's what the city council would like to see. So that's my only suggestion.
Thank you very much for that. That's, you put it much more eloquently than I did, but this, this is a good start, and that's the way I feel, is that would be very impactful for this to be the cover letter of that.
I think that what Weston pointed out is very important, was it was a tremendous disservice to the public to not have it recorded. And just as a footnote, I understand from the staff, if this ever happens again, you stop the meeting because it takes a few minutes to get it, get it going. So one of the things that was discussed at that meeting that's not recorded is the staff is concerned about having an extra workload. So one of the explanations was, one of the things we've seen that would be very helpful for the people of this town is to have the kind of supplement that's available in Grass Valley, where they list various experts that are available. So you want to find a mason who knows about masonry for the fountain toldman, which you cannot use, and it's gonna fall apart.
Mr. Smith, you're getting off topic a little bit here, too. That's going into the detail of what you want to do, and I don't disagree with it.
Yeah, but you're not, if you want us to do that kind of groundwork.
Right, so let's, let's get that report to the council.
That's right.
The council can then tell you if they want you to proceed that work.
Right. And look, tonight, somebody has a home that's, that they don't know the background of it. In other places, they have lists of where you can go to get the background information about houses. And when people are interested in that, it'll help to bring about increased enforcement and the goals of those guidelines. So that's one of the things that was discussed last time, that would lighten the workload. But you're not going to get a lot of people volunteering to do wordsmithing and all that other kind of stuff if, if there isn't a chart to go forward. And we're just letting you know in advance that the refinement you're gonna get is, we think that there's a number of issues, questions to be raised regarding the guidelines and what kind of guidelines you think that we should have. And it's not going to be our suggestions alone, it's got to be coming from five people. So it's not.
I think we're gonna ask a question. So, one, I agree that this, this is simultaneously too specific and too broad, and I think leaves the suggestion of having this be a more robust, and the gentleman's, a more robust and thorough letter, I think, would be smart, because council, you don't want them to keep reading some small pieces of information over and over. So I really think that this needs to be put away until we get the June 18th thing. Is my understanding, I was at the April 16th meeting, because I remember trying to go back and watch it and not being able to, but I was here. And, or whatever it was. But from what I remember, and correct me if I'm wrong, you guys are gonna come back in June with what I think I called a Candy Land, right? Like a roadmap of potential ideas of things that we can tackle that lead into.
It's just to be finalize the draft that, that we've already seen, so to, yeah.
Right, and to kind of have that be more robust in guiding our path, right? And so what, what I'm expecting in June is for us to have sort of, not that you've done all of the work, but that you've carved out what are the, we talked about low-hanging fruit at that meeting, we talked about just different ways that we can tackle this beast and get some wins, some small wins, and then some larger goals, workshops, things that need a little bit more time investment, everything like that. So, all of that is to say, I hope in June, what will come back isn't a bunch of extra additional work by you guys necessarily, but a, a path forward, a suggested path forward that we could potentially start to really tackle and see what we can take on. And then combine that with this letter, a type of letter like this, letting city council know, hey, this is what we've been doing, this is where we think we need and want to go, we're informing you of that, and this is how we're gonna do it. Am I correct in understanding that as our path forward with this?
I had a little bit different, I had a little, a slightly different recollection. The special committee came back to us with a draft report. That work product really was the conclusion of their efforts, that committee. And so that committee, you're done with your work, right? But at the same time, that work showed that, as it says in the memo, we, we have responsibilities, and how are we gonna meet those responsibilities? That's the fundamental question. How is the planning commission going to meet the duties assigned to it? At the end of the day, that's, we all have to decide. The special committee, the, the second one that was reappointed, the one that exists right now today, is, its purpose really is to help this, bring ideas for this commission to then discuss collectively and with consensus say, okay, this is the most important thing, we're gonna work on this one, okay? And then, and this list, where some of the things that we agreed were important, okay? So, but everything comes back to the commission, the mechanics art comes back to the commission, and the commission then provides direction back to the special committee. Okay, and, and some things that aren't on this list might arise. You know, we talked about going, taking a site visit, you know, Grass Valley, or to Amador City, or Sutter Creek, or whatever. So, so specifically, we have these, because we talked about them, and we agreed on them. The order in which we do it and when we do it, the committee does it and the commission does it, is really immaterial.
I disagree with that, though.
Why?
I do, too.
Because I think it's important to set our priorities, because otherwise, we're gonna keep spinning in this huge fishbowl.
Right, right. No, we're saying the same thing.
We can't move forward until we finish.
So I'm gonna do this. Madam Chair, I want to call the question.
Okay.
There's a motion on the table.
Can you repeat the motion?
There's a motion duly made, right?
Yeah.
What is the, what is the motion?
I moved, I moved, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Hunter. I moved that this letter be held and, and used as a cover letter in association with the refined finalized report from the special committee.
And we can change this, we can strengthen this letter.
You can, you can scrap it. You can say a letter.
I'm not against it. I'm, I like the spirit of it.
A letter, a letter will go to the city council.
Yeah. I think that, that's, I know it sort of seems obvious to me that if we come up with solutions that we would like to start really hammering into and moving forward, that we would write a letter to explain those decisions and paths and intentions.
And a call, a call to question requires an up or down vote by Robert's rules. Sorry.
Okay.
I, I just want to move the discussion, because it's getting late, and, and we still have special committee on the agenda.
So are you asking for a roll call vote? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Yes, I second it.
Yeah.
Okay. Second by Ryan Carter.
And I'm sorry, the motion is.
Is to.
Hold the letter until we got a final report to go to council.
Yeah. Okay.
Aye.
Chair, do you want a roll vote?
Um.
Or voice vote?
I'm just very concerned at the procedure. I'm going to abstain on this vote. And the reason I'm abstaining is that obviously, I've already stated that a cover letter needs to be drafted and appended to the final report, so.
Correct. That's what the motion was. That's what the motion is.
That is the motion.
That is the motion.
And I think you suggested it appropriately can come from the chair.
Yeah, that's the motion.
I would like the motion to read that a cover letter will be drafted, to be included with the final report. That's, that's how I, that's a motion I can support.
I, I think that's what would happen anyway. Okay, so, so, so I'm gonna withdraw my motion. I called the question, I'm not sure if I can, I'm withdrawing my motion. Okay, I'm gonna make a new motion. I move that this letter be discarded.
Okay, I'll, I'll second it then.
Oh, thank you.
To ask that one.
All that question, please. All the question.
And write a letter.
Yeah, all the question, please.
I feel like this is getting really complex for.
Yes.
I'm not sure.
Evil of good is perfect.
Motion?
Lepa.
Aye.
Ms. Lepa seconded.
Was there a second?
Ms. Lepa seconded.
Yeah.
To discard this letter?
Yeah, discard it, just discard it.
Okay. Sure.
Okay, have a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Vice Chair Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Friend?
Aye.
Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepa?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, that became so contentious, but I think we are in agreement. And certainly, I think it would be appropriate to include a lot of the information that was provided in this letter. So rather than actually completely discarding it, I think it will be a good reference for the eventual cover letter. Is there a further report? I think we, we have a June 18th, I mean, under 12.1.
Oh, no, that's it.
Nothing else? Okay. Let's move on to 13. This is, thank you very much, the appointment of Kristen Hunter, Associate Planner, and is that to Executive Secretary of the Planning Commission?
Yes, Commissioner Keeney, I'm currently in that role. When, when City Planner Andrew Painter retired, then that, what went to me to serve as the Executive Secretary. But I've been working closely with Ms. Hunter, she's just done a fantastic job. In fact, I think you know, when you train somebody well, when all of a sudden, the, you know, the pupil becomes the teacher. So a lot of times, I go to her on her perspective, or what does she think on this, or am I in the right direction? So, you know, I think she's already doing the job, doing a, just a stellar job of doing the minutes and putting the agendas together and making sure the notices go out to where I don't have to worry about it. And it's fantastic. So I just wanted to put this on the agenda to, to announce that per Article 5E of the bylaws, I'm officially appointing her as the Executive Secretary to the Planning Commission. I just wanted to express my gratitude and everything she's done here to help me and make our work as staff to you a success.
Well, thank you very much for sharing that information. And it takes no action on our part, it's, it's information. And that was a really wonderful description and summary of your rising in the ranks, Kristen, and job well done. Congratulations.
We should have cake. Let them eat cake.
Always, I'm in.
Yeah, okay.
We'll go to the new bakery.
Congratulations, yes.
Okay, we'll move on to 13.2, staff reports. Any other updates from staff?
We do have a meeting scheduled for the first Tuesday in June. I believe it's June 4th. Apologize, it's a little late. We will have two items on the agenda.
I will not be at that meeting. I will be in the UK. UK.
You are international travel.
All right. Okay, and moving on to 13.3, Plan Commission matters. This is for the commission members to update other members, and so, Amy, you have something?
I just have one question about the new mattress store. I don't remember if I've brought it up before, the one, the old ski and snowboard shop. Their signs, like temporary?
I, I will let Pierre speak more on that, but they are in code enforcement.
Okay, great, thank you. Just curious if it was on the radar.
It is, thank you.
And what's happening?
I mean, I figured, I just, every time I drive by, okay.
What's happening with the Starbucks up the, up the street?
It's an interior remodel.
Oh, okay, so it's gonna be a Starbucks again?
It will be a Starbucks, yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Moving forward, very quickly.
Yeah, gotcha.
Now, we're under 13.3.1, Special Committee reports. Now we get to that. Is there a report from the special committee?
I can just do a real quick one. It is unfortunate that we were kind of depending, we had a really robust conversation in that last meeting. It's really unfortunate that that recording was lost, because we were really counting on some of those conversations to help us. But we will be, we're still planning on having that updated, or not updated, but that finalized report coming back to you guys on the 18th, pending staff availability for that meeting. But it is unfortunate, and I hope that what we bring you guys is okay, because we did lose a lot of that conversation with that meeting not be recorded. But we're gonna bring you the best that we have, and we look forward to the conversation and finalizing something for city council.
That was the only thing that the speaker said that I really agreed with. My understanding, Madam Chair, is that if the June, late, hopefully it's the June 19th, I think I indicated the last meeting, I would not be here June 4th, because a trip is planned.
It's the 18th, I believe.
So the report that the special committee wrote previously, and maybe staff can get me a copy of that, that should, you should have that, you have that in electronic form? The report that was submitted by Commissioners Carter and Smith?
Yes, it was on the agenda and in the packet, so I, we should have it.
So I, I'm just give you some wordsmith recommendations and send it back to you. So my understanding is, is that report is gonna come back? And then.
I'm not sure we can do that.
I don't think that would be proper procedure, would it?
That's what we agreed to in the, that's what's in the minutes, that's what we agreed to by action.
But I don't believe it should be you directly to the special committee, because then it's a discussion between three planning commission. a discussion between three planning commissioners, which can be considered a Brown Act violation.
No, I'm, oh, I should submit it to staff. Okay, I'm sorry, Paul, I mean, I don't want to-
That's what I was concerned with, yeah.
So I'll submit my comments that staff can then get to, just my suggestions, and whichever direction you're going to go with that. And then it's, this would be the time on the agenda, the hour is late, but this would be the time, at least my understanding of how these mechanics would work, is we would have a discussion about, okay, we want to pick a priority, either something we've already talked about or something new, and then provide direction of the committee, and we'd have a discussion and go from it. That's kind of how I think this is supposed to, supposed to work, so.
I think the other thing I'd ask is, what about workshops? To come back to this issue tonight about the interim housing, the short-term housing, clearly there was a lot of interest, and it was helpful for me. So can we have some workshops scheduled where we actually have the whole time devoted to one subject, so we won't be too crammed in?
On what topic are you requesting?
Well, the last one that you had tonight turned out to be a problem when it's two hours packed in together. It seems like when you have a workshop, it needs to be by itself. And what we're alerting you to is that, what we described in the memo, is we wanted to have workshops on these subjects, so we hear from the public, get their expertise, which covers the gamut.
Yeah. So the question, if I understand that correctly, if I may, through the chair, the question is, how do we go about scheduling, assuming the commission, assuming we collectively agree, and I thought we had that discussion and did think was a really good idea we should do. So now the question is, how do we do that? What would be the process for us to go ahead and put a workshop on? Now, that is, that is work for staff, so we, you know, we have to talk about that, but maybe, maybe you could, at a future meeting, hopefully not June 4, but you can, June 4, I won't be here, you could provide us some information about what it entails to put on a workshop, then we can have a discussion about how we might do that. Because I, I think we all agree, and I'll speak for myself, I agree with what was in the report, that outreach and workshops are necessary. You know, the lady that was here this evening bought a home in 2002, had no idea she was in a historic district until she got a code enforcement thing. You're in a historic district. What?
Well, tonight, I am not comfortable with us moving forward at this point with conjecture of what we want to do as far as workshops or outreach, but I want us to focus in on getting this, the next draft of your report, and getting that, wordsmithing it. In fact, I would think at that meeting or a subsequent meeting, we refine it so that we're all very happy with the report as it is, and from that, we derive a set of priorities, rather than speculating without that final report in hand, what we think is the most important next steps. Any further comments? All right, well, we covered a lot of ground. I appreciate everybody's patience and hard work. And so it is 9:42. We will adjourn this meeting until June 4th. Thank you.
The wife got tickets to see Taylor Swift in Liverpool, so she and the daughter are going to do that while I'm in the pub.